The open meetings law changes enacted in the New York State budget enabled us to have this meeting by video conference during an emergency declaration. And that emergency declaration was recently extended until August 13th, 2022. The board has agreed to meet virtually as long as circumstances allow. I expect our August meeting to be in person at 79 Bouton Road. But if the governor issues another extension to the emergency, we would then meet virtually. No one is at our in-person meeting location at 79 Bouton Road. This meeting is being recorded. And Kirsten Conrad has confirmed that the YouTube feed is active and working, and that the meeting has been duly noticed. Legal notice requirements have fulfilled. We intend to post a recording and a transcript of this meeting to the town website. The Zoom video will also be available on the town's YouTube channel. So joining me on this Zoom conference from the town of Lewisboro are the members of the planning board, Charlene and Delicato, Jerome Kerner, Greg LaSorsa, and if Bruce isn't, oh, there he is, Bruce Thompson is joining us now. We do have a quorum, and thus we can conduct the business of the board, and we can vote on any matters that come before the board. Also on the conference call are Planning and Wetlands Consultant Jan Johansson and Council Judd Seibert, as well as Planning Board Administrator Kirsten Conrad and the CAC Chair John Wolf. We do not have a public hearing scheduled for tonight, and we do not expect to take any public comments at this meeting. Members of the public can always express their views by mail or email to planning@lewissborrowgov.com. Again, the public can see and hear this meeting live on the TV, Lewisboro TV YouTube channel, and we intend to post it there for future review by the public. We ask any applicants that are not currently engaging in dialogue to mute their lines. This will help everyone hear over the inevitable background noises. And during this meeting, to ease the recording of our votes, I will poll the board members individually. So with that, now the first item on our agenda is calendar number 03-13 PB, calendar number 03-16 WP. This is Silver Mine Preserve. On Silver Mine Drive and Lockwood Road, South Salem, New York. And it's an application for subdivision, wetland activity, and stormwater permits for the construction of a 13-lot subdivision. We did have a public hearing that opened and closed during the meeting on in June of 2022, last month. And we received additional public comments up until that it was open until July 5th. And we've had received a number of comments then and since then. We did, the board requested the preparation of a resolution last month. And I know that our consultants and attorney have been working on this and have provided a draft for the board's consideration. And some drafts came out as recently as this afternoon. So I think the draft is a work in progress. And based on that, if the applicant is amenable and if the board agrees, I recommend tabling this item to the August 16th meeting. And the statutory time to act upon this final plat application is still open by that date, so we don't run into any problems. So I'd look for, I guess, first the applicant to see if that would be all right, and then see if board, any board members have any comments on that.
I need Jerry Tortorella of Hockaman Tortorella in Wexting, and we're counsel for the applicants on this subdivision. We don't have any objection to that. I mean, we just recently got access to the resolution as well and wanted a chance to review it. And, you know, if there are any questions, consult with council about that, the planning board council about that. So we don't have any objection through August 16th, 2022.
Right. Okay, Jerome.
Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion that we table the, uh, the action on the resolution until the August meeting.
Yeah, I, I don't think we necessarily need a motion. If the board wishes to do so, we'll just hold it over.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't hear any, anybody disagree to that. So speak up quickly or else, okay. I think, Jerry, we'll see you in August and hope that you have a chance to look at the, the resolution with your applicant, with the, with your clients between now and then. So I think that's good. Okay, thank you.
This is, you know, this is a, you know, a fairly detailed resolution. I was on vacation last week, so, you know, to the extent we're holding it over, perhaps some of that rests with my, my downtime. But I think it would be beneficial for us just to take a month, take a look at it.
Yeah, and I know I had a couple of comments earlier today. So it's, it's still, it's still moving. So thank you all, and we'll see you again in, in August.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is also a decision. It's calendar number 10-15 PB, calendar number 20-17 WP, and calendar number 5-17 SW. This is Lewisboro Commons, also known as Wilder Balder at 100 Beekman Lane, Goldensbridge, New York. This is an amendment of condition 67 in the resolution that grants site development plan approval, wetland activity permit approval, and town stormwater permit granted on, oh, sorry, dated on February 26, 2019. We heard and discussed this in our June 2022 meeting. It was a request from the applicant and from the Goldensbridge Fire Department to amend the resolution regarding some of the fire protection in the, in the buildings. And we do have a resolution. So, Jan, if you would maybe like to just highlight what the resolution says.
Sure. At the board's request, we put together a resolution which amends February 26, 2019, approving resolution for this 42-unit multifamily residential development in, in Goldensbridge on Route 22. Property consists of 35.4 acres, proposed to be five buildings. Board approved the project in February 2019 by resolution. The site plans were signed, building permits were issued. Construction has commenced, well under construction at this point. There was a condition number 67 in the approving resolution that states, I'll quote, "Each building shall be equipped with an additional fire connection and dry line to service sprinkler heads in the building's attics." This was in addition to the automatic sprinkler system that's provided in, in all the buildings and the livable spaces. We did receive an email from Rob Malillo of the Fire Department, Goldensbridge Fire Department, which requested that if the sprinkler systems in the attics could not be connected to the main system, that they would prefer that they not be installed at all. It's not feasible to connect those, those fire sprinkler systems to the main system. They're not required by code, the fire suppression in the attics. So this resolution at the request of the Fire Department removes condition number 67 from the approval resolution.
Thank you. So I'd look for a motion to approve the resolution as distributed to the, to the board and outlined here by Jan. Charlene, I didn't hear you, but I saw the motion so that you moved.
They're good.
Yes, I moved.
Okay, and Jerome seconded. Do we have any discussion on this? Okay, I will pull the board.
Hold on, yeah, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
I, I don't get that, and I don't see any evidence to indicate that the, uh, the use of the dry sprinkle was not feasible. I just think, or the use of a sprinkler in the attic is not feasible. I just think that they, based on the email that I read, that since it's not connected to the main water system, that wouldn't be something that the Fire Department wanted to deal with. So, I mean, I don't know why we're not putting a sprinkler into the attic. I mean, I certainly don't like the way in which we're going about doing this. It's setting a very bad precedent. And, um, you know.
What, what's, what's bad about it, Greg? I don't understand.
I don't like the idea that you can change your resolution under these circumstances, Jerome. I mean, we had no, no evidence whatsoever. This was put before us at the last meeting. I got an email from Rob Malillo the day after the last meeting. It, it raises more questions than it answers. And now we've got a resolution already. And I'd like, you know, I, I hope we don't use this as a basis to do other things. I mean, it's obvious that we're going to pass this, but, you know.
Yeah, I think what, I, I think actually Jerome said this in the last meeting, that this is typically a condition that is discussed by the building inspector and the Fire Department in making sure that it's, it aligns with the codes at that, um, that, that are there, and it's.
Not if we have a resolution.
Well, and we put it in the resolution at the request of the Fire Department, as I recall.
So obviously, the Fire Department wanted something to be done, and the manner in which they're doing it, they're not comfortable with. I don't think it means that they don't want a sprinkler in the attic.
Okay, well, I, I could be.
If I understand correctly, all they have to do is, is charge the water, but bring water to, to the attic. They don't want to do that.
I, my understanding, and I could be incorrect, is that that's not conditioned space so that it would be subject to freezing. And that's certainly not.
Okay, so, so that's what you know. I don't know that, okay? I don't know where you got that information from. It certainly hasn't been brought out to, to any information in front of this, in front of this board. We, you know.
John, would you like to comment?
Yes, regardless of whether it's feasible or not, the applicant is not prepared to put sprinkles into the automatic system in the attic. This was, this was a clear position taken during the approval process. The applicant made the presentation, made the gesture to do this to get to the finish line. The Fire Department, honestly, the rank and file in the, in the Fire Department's never wanted this. This was really, this was really the politics of it. And, and in any event, they've made it abundantly clear that they do not want this dry system in the attic. We've stopped the installation of that. We're ready to, to get to certificates of occupancy and occupy these buildings. And I would, I would respectfully request that you act on this resolution tonight so we can put this to rest. In addition, in addition, on the feasibility side, these systems have not been designed to be, to incorporate the attic sprinklers into the attics. Three of the buildings are constructed and insulated. And in addition, they would require additional infrastructure to protect them during the winter, which is one of the reasons why they're not required under the code to begin with. The purpose of these fire sprinklers is to give the residents an opportunity to evacuate the building in the event of a fire. That's what, that's what they will achieve. In addition to the fire sprinklers, you may recall that we do have a 25,000-gallon separate water tank that's dedicated for fire suppression. That, that tank was, was tested by the Fire Department last week. They're very pleased with the results and are issuing a letter in accordance with the, the resolution requirements. So, and then the last item is there is not adequate pressure in most of these buildings to effectuate an automatic sprinkler system in the attics. So for those reasons, and again, primarily, the primary reason here is that the Fire Department does not want them installed. So I'm on the record, I'm clearly on the record on this. And, and, you know, we've, we've worked very closely here with the Fire Department now over the last eight months as we've constructed this, this, this project.
Okay, Bruce, it looked like you were getting ready to say something.
Yes, Greg, we had a back and exchange after the last meeting, I believe. And I was weighing in on why you can't have a dry system and a wet system with one supply for the hookup for the Fire Department. There are two independent systems, they can't be blended. The code is just as was stated earlier. The code does not require that that attic space be sprinkled. This was a requirement that was added by the Fire Department, as I understand it, back in the approval process. But upon further examination, it seems to have more, be more problematic than it does to be, than it is a good solution to a potential problem. Hence, they men who went out there to witness it said that they didn't want to pursue that where we are at tonight. So I believe it's a wise thing to have done, to have eliminated this from the resolution.
Okay, so, oh, go ahead, Jerome.
I just wanted to say something to, for the record. John Ben-Larney just mentioned something about the politics of it. The sprinkler system was put in for the politics of it. First of all, we're not in the business of politics, number one. Number two, we shouldn't be in the business of fire protection. It's a building code issue, and it falls in the purview of the building inspector. We, we did make sure that the storage tank was part of the planning process that would serve that fire suppression system. But other than that, that's not our, that's not our responsibility. That's it.
Okay.
So just so that I'm clear, so if we were to prepare a resolution and vote on it and approve it, and if there is some issue that comes up, and maybe the building inspector doesn't think that it's appropriate or whatever, then that, going forward, that resolution is, is going to be amended and exclude that, that item? Is that, is that what we're saying here today? Because I don't remember ever doing this in the last 10 years.
I, well, I don't know if it's, if the building inspector says it's not appropriate.
Well, that's what I'm hearing.
I would hope that we would have worked with the building inspector and get something that everybody agreed on. I think what we're saying here is that we put in something at the request of the Fire Department. They now have said they don't want it. And so we're amending the, we're, we have a resolution that would amend the, the original resolution.
The, the resolution, and at the end of the day, whatever is built must remain code compliant under the New York State Fire Prevention and Building Code.
Exactly.
So our resolutions are secondary to whatever the building inspector and the builder decide, decide?
I think it's to the building inspector, yeah. I think the building inspector would, would weigh in on this, obviously. And whether a resolution says anything, you know.
Okay, again, first time I've, I've heard of this in 10 years, but it's okay.
I think it's code-driven.
It is code.
I would appreciate that everything is code-driven, but, you know. I mean, when we did the resolution, I would assume that we were doing it in that regard also.
Okay, I, if, are there any more comments? I will poll the board. Charlene. Jerome.
Aye.
Greg.
No.
Bruce.
Aye.
And I also say aye, so the motion carries to approve this resolution. Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is an extension of time request. And this is calendar number 05-17 SW. Again, Lewis, Lewisboro Commons, also known as Wilder Balder, 100 Beekman Lane, Goldensbridge, New York. And this is a request for a one-year extension of time to the resolution that grants stormwater permit approval. And I believe that the, the current permit would expire on August 26, 2022. And there's, so a one-year extension would take it out till August of 2023. John, do you want to make a comment on this?
Sure. Construction is substantially complete on the stormwater improvements. We've, we've been under construction for, I believe, or it's coming up on 18 months. We have been having twice a week SWIP inspections that have been performed by the civil engineer of record. And your planner's office has been out and doing monthly inspections in addition to inspections by the DCP. So in order to be able to close out the stormwater permit at the end, we have to achieve stabilization of the site. And we have to be 80% stabilized across 100% of the site. So we will not achieve that before the fall growing season. We're now in a time where it's very difficult to, to grow grass. And, but the majority of the site work and grading is completed. We're now grading at the, in preparation for the final foundation for building five. A grading is substantially complete around the first three buildings. And all of the mass grading is completed. The stormwater basins have been substantially completed for more than a year. So it's possible we may get to, to a place where we can file the notice of termination with the DEC, close out the SWIP in the fall. But it's equally possible that if we don't have the required grass coverage, that we'll need to go to the spring. So that's the reason for the request. And my understanding is that these permits are pretty routinely extended.
Thank you. So I'd look for a motion to extend the stormwater permit approval for one year out till August 26, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Jerome. It looks like Bruce, you seconded? Yeah, you're muted, but I'll take that as a, any discussion on this?
I'm unmuted. I second it.
Great.
Thanks.
So when do we expect people to begin living in these residences?
Either towards the end of July or into August.
So can we extend the stormwater approval while people are, when people actually inhabit the place?
Yes.
Well, I'm asking Judd, actually.
Yeah, yes, you can.
I think there are separate building permits issued for each building, and separate COs would be issued for each building. But the stormwater, wetland permits, site plan approvals go towards, you know, the issuance of the last CEO. So those typically stay in place throughout construction. But in a multi-building development, it'd be typical to to have certain buildings occupied while certain permits are still in place or continues, much like a subdivision, you know. Popoli, for instance, you had several, still under construction, but five of the units are constructed, constructed and occupied. But we have an ongoing stormwater permit that will stay there for the life of the project until the, the final CEO is issued and 100% stabilization.
I think what I heard, though, was that mass grading is, is done. And so, which would lay my, any concern about people, you know, inhabiting. It's mostly grass and, you know, light manual labor. Is that correct?
Correct, and, and in coordination with each, with the state HCR and the county, the, there'll be a constructive safety plan in place. That'll be approved by, by the building department, which we've already, we've already started on. But the, the grading is substantially complete. And the first buildings that are open, the only thing that will not be complete is the final planting and then the top coat, the final top coat of the asphalt, which will be done at the end of the project. It'll be, it'll be temp striked in the meantime.
Okay, thank you. So I'm, we got, we had a motion in a second. So any further discussion on this? I'll poll the board. Charlene. Jerome.
Aye.
Greg. Bruce.
Aye.
And I also say aye, so the, so the request for the one-year extension of time has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you for the time. I appreciate it. And stay, try to stay cool. It's going to be a rough couple of days.
You too. Okay, the next item on our agenda is one I am recused from. So, and Jerome has agreed to handle it for me.
Yes, I, you know, I haven't got the agenda handy with the calendar number.
Okay, I, I can do that and then.
Or Kirsten could do it, if you want to step aside.
8-12 PB. Oscar Lita Road, South Salem. Request of extension of time granting preliminary final subdivision plat approval, negative declaration under secret, dated October 21st, 2014. And I'm not sure if anyone's here on that matter.
Michael is not going to be here tonight.
Will not be.
Yeah, he's out of the country. He, I spoke with him before I left on vacation. He indicated that if the board had any questions, you know, this could be held over till August. I can report that we've been provided a map that I believe with some modification will be suitable for execution by the planning board and recording with the, with the county clerk. I had provided Jan and Joe with a, kind of a memo, kind of walking through what's been provided. And that's also been shared now with Michael and, you know, the, the applicant's engineers. So I, I think this may perhaps be the last of the extensions that we've been granting on this.
Okay, well, how does the board feel about proceeding without the applicant's representative? I'm okay with it on the basis of Judd's commentary in granting the extension, but we need to have a motion to that respect.
Jerome, I, I could also just mention that I, I've been in touch with their surveyor, Stanley Johnson, Mel Kisco, as early as, I think, yesterday, going back and forth on the plat, adding, making sure that the wetland boundary gets added to the plat, bookable notes for our last memo are added. So I, I agree with Judd. It's, it's right there. I would think this will be the last, last time you have to deal with this issue.
Okay, well, I, I need to get a consensus from the board.
Do you want me to make a motion, Jerome?
We need a motion, Judd, or?
A motion, yes.
We do, yeah. So a motion, please.
So based on our consultant's statements, I so move that an extension be granted for calendar number 08-12 PB.
We have a second.
I'll second it.
Greg seconds. Further discussion? Any questions for Judd or Jan? I'll poll the board. If no further questions, Charlene. Bruce.
Bruce, aye.
Greg?
Yes.
I say aye, and there's one abstention, which is Janet Anderson. So motion passes.
Okay, thank you, Jerome.
To you, Jen.
Okay. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a site development plan review. This is calendar number 06-22 PB, calendar number 05-22 WP, and calendar number 03-22 SW. The Wackabuck Country Club snack bar on Perch Bay Road in Wackabuck, New York. This is an application for beachfront improvements, including renovation of the boathouse, construction of a pavilion, replacement of the snack bar, and installation of accessible parking and walkways. This was before us in March, April, and June. We had a site walk on April 9th. In June, we confirmed our lead agency status. And so I think our, and we did get a long EAF part two. So I think that's our objective to kind of go through that. The major thing that we should. Objective to kind of go through that, the major thing that we should talk about tonight. I wanted to see if anyone is on from. From Walkabout Country Club who wants to make any comments before we start down that path.
Good evening, Chairman Dawn McKenzie, Registered Landscape Architect from Insight Engineering Surveying and Landscape Architecture. Here tonight representing Walkabout Country Club on this project. Just, Zach was unable to attend tonight. He has a conflict, so you get to deal with me. I I'm sure all of you have been through our submission. We've made some adjustments to the site plans based on. And provided additional information based on input from the board at last month's meeting. And if you need me to, I can just hit on a couple of those things. So since we were last before you in our submission. Member Thompson had requested, had commented about potential for some groundwater, so we added the underdrain. By the ledge, as he requested, we eliminated the walking path down to the lake that is no longer on the site plan. So that has reduced some impervious surfaces, proposed impervious surfaces, and it is also reduced some disturbance and saved a few trees. And in addition to that. At the request of the board, there's a small onsite town regulated wetland. And we have relocated the woodchip path that currently goes through that. So on the site plan, it now goes around that wetland. And we provided additional plantings in that area associated with that. And those were some of the biggest changes that we've made. Also. On the architecture plans, which didn't make it into the submission, but which will go into our next submission. There was a comment from the C A C about potentially changing the stairs on the far end of the pavilion. And the architect has revised those to do a straight run down to the waterfront. And so that will eliminate a small amount of disturbance and it's a more direct connection, something else that. And we'll be submitting plans for that next time we come in. I believe the next submission date is a week from today. So we'll be making another site plan submission. In addition to that, something else that happened after we made our submission, the architect had further correspondence with SHIPO. That's New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation relative to their comments on. You know, they had issued a letter of no impact with conditions and based on further. Coordination and correspondence between between John Doyle's office and SHIPO. They have, SHIPO has revised their letter, give us a new letter of no impact without conditions, excepting the way the plan has been designed. So. So that's something else we'll be submitting to you. On Tuesday for next month's meeting. Let me see. And in addition, the board had requested some additional figures. We've provided those. So anything you want me to put up, we can certainly go through. And that's where we're at and maybe a little bit preemptive, but what we're hoping. I know you all want to go through the part two A F and we're hoping that. Before the end of this meeting, you'll be ready to schedule a public hearing. So that's, anyone has any questions or would like me to talk about anything else, I will be glad to do so.
Okay. Yeah, it's good to be to have a goal. I'm not sure we're gonna get there, but okay. So Yan, did you want to go through your memo at this point or?
I think it would be a good segue into your review of the part two. I'll also mention that since the last meeting I was on site with Jim Bates, their environmental consultant, and I confirmed the wetland boundary. Got a tour of the facility. So that that is done. You know, procedurally. The applicants before the board on a number of different permits, site plan, stormwater permit and a wetland permit. Other permits that are applicable include zoning board approval, and that's actually for the use. This is a an existing nonconforming use. So there's a provision in the code that allows for the expansion of nonconforming uses, subject to certain provisions. To be approved by the the zoning board. So we had a similar case with the La Chateau project. That was in a residential district, was a nonconforming use, you know, not listed under. Most of the uses allowable in that zone, they went to the Z B A and they got, it's not a variance, it's actually an approval. For that use to allow them to exist and to allow for the expansion. So Z B A, Z B A has that same role here. At Kark, I believe they've already been to, the D P is issuing. Or will need to issue a variance under their regulations for installation of impervious surfaces within a hundred feet of the of the lake. Health Department approval for the septic system. Coverage under the D C, Speedy's general permit for stormwater. So there's a bunch of different agency approvals here and the applicant's well underway on. I think on all of them, I'm getting copied on some of the submissions and responses. I know they're not before the Z B A, I don't think anyway, but certainly the D P, et cetera. There's a lot of progress. But none of those, you you are conducting a coordinated review under SECRE. You declared your intent to be lead agency circulated to the involved and interested agencies. And then at a prior meeting declared lead agency. So you are responsible as a board for the secret review of the project. The applicant submitted a part one long form E A F. That is their document. The part two is your document. That's what you're going to go through tonight. You're going to identify. Whether certain items are considered small to or no impacts or potentially large and require further evaluation. That's a necessary component of the secret process, kind of a procedure you have to go through. But in a case like this, given the number of agencies involved, and particularly because the Z B A is involved. And the planning board never acts in advance of the Z B A, because it's you can't act on a nonconforming use. The Z B A has to make a decision before the planning board does. And they can't make that decision until seeker is complete. So what I suggest the board do procedurally is that. Go through the part two. We're suggesting certain items be marked. Moderate to large impact, requiring a submission of a part three, which is just can be a simple narrative. Further explanation. You go through the part three and. If everything is is determined to be, you know, relatively insignificant, or there's mitigation provided. You get yourself into a place where you can issue a determination of significance. And then that determination can be used by the applicant to go to the other agencies and get their approvals. You know, the the planning board historically has made certain approvals conditions, but the Z B A is not one of them. So. I think that the the neg deck, if there is one, is the next step for the applicant. That would allow them to go to the Z B A, potentially get that decision, and if they're successful, come back to the planning board for. The public hearing and the other. The other permits. So. Not that you couldn't start a public hearing, you could, but you couldn't close that hearing until. Till you're ready to act, until the secret was complete. So I don't, I don't want to say don't schedule a public hearing, but. You can't schedule it and think that it can be closed in the next meeting because there there's there's other procedural items that have to take place.
Jerome, go ahead. You're muted. Jerome, we can't hear you.
I'd like to make just a brief comment about. The, not not to argue about the the process, which. We have to go through in the secret. Order, but the fact is that this is a an existing condition. That is being expanded, but also improved is why, as I see it, systems. Will will be improved, whether it's infrastructure or the interior. Pick the cooking, air quality, plumbing, et cetera. So I I can't think of any downside. That would show up on on the secret review. Yan, are there any?
When you, when the board goes through the part two, there are certain numerical thresholds that they that they exceed. And when you go through the part two. If if you answer any of those, if you meet or exceed any of those numerical thresholds or any of the questions that they ask, you have to mark. Small to ma, or you have to mark. Moderate to large and then explain it in the part three. And the part three can be a paragraph for that particular item. It's, it doesn't have to be an exhaustive process, but I mean, those are the rules. So for instance, disturbance on slopes greater than fifteen percent. Absolutely, there's steep slope disturbance associated with the project, disturbance within a regulatory wetland buffer, absolutely. So those are sta, those are thresholds that they're exceeding, they're meeting or exceeding. So you have to mark that. Moderate to large and you have to explain it in the in the part three. There's certain, there's items about the. The amount of material removed from the site, cuts and fills over a thousand tons. They exceed, I think they exceed that. Or that, that was a question at least in our in our memo. So. It doesn't, it's not the end of the world. It doesn't mean that it's an adverse impact. It just means that it requires some evaluation. And of course, they have all the erosion sediment controls, they have stormwater mitigation, they're providing a wetland mitigation plan. They have things and already built into their their project and to the design that are mitigating some of these impacts, but. It's a process and it has to go go forward that way.
Yeah, I I agree, Jerome, in that I think. The the end result will be. Beneficial, but I think we have to go through the steps and I I also. Want to really make clear, just because we say something is a moderate to large impact may occur and ask for that to be. Check that way or agree that that's how it should be checked. It still can have a neg deck after we after we evaluate it. These are just things that that are. We need, we should look into a little bit more procedurally because of the, as as Yan just explained, because of the. The kind of. Amounts that are tripped when we, as we look at it.
It's only going to make whatever decision you take more solid. That you have justification for your decisions because there's this evaluation that had taken place. So it's, it's only gonna. Make your decision more more bulletproof.
And thank you, Yan, for explaining some of the steps. And I think that's, that's why I think. Well, well, we can talk about it later, but my sense is we have, I'd rather see the. The Z B A get this before we, or or at least be on the way to reviewing this before we schedule a public hearing myself. But, okay, so with that, if. Do you want me to sort of lead through the various? Part two items, I mean, we can be guided by Yan's memo.
I could also, I could, I have it in front of me. If you'd like me to share my screen, I could bring up the part two.
Great, perfect.
Stand by. Alright, so. Impact on land is the first item. So here's the threshold question. You've gone through these before. There's, I think, sixteen different categories. There's a threshold question. And if you answer that yes, then you have to answer the other questions. If you answer it no. All of these turn blank and you don't have to answer any of the sub questions. So. Proposed action may involve construction on on or physical alteration of, you know, the surface of the land. Yes, so you have to mark this yes, and then you have to ask, or you have to answer each of these sub questions. So one A was. Proposed action may involve construction on land where the depth of water table is less than three feet. I believe down by the stormwater basin, there was some hydrology there. Potentially where the the cistern is proposed down by the lake's edge, there's a potential for high groundwater. There was seeps identified by certain board members in areas that are going to be mitigated. So. We felt that there was a potential for encounter of groundwater less than three feet. So we're suggesting that this be checked moderate to large impact and that the applicant provide an evaluation of that in the part three.
So I would agree with that. I I don't know. And the most efficient way to go through this, do we want to discuss each one or just someone speak up if you. Disagree with the recommend, I think that's what I'll say. Let's speak up if you disagree with the recommendation that Yan is making on any one point. And if silence means you agree with the. The the recommendation he's making or the assessment he's making. Okay.
Second one, same thing. You you have construction on slopes greater than fifteen percent.
So you'd make that moderate.
Yeah, and just so you know, you know, in the in the instructions up here, it identifies that if you hit any of the numerical thresholds that. You have to mark that that column, moderate to large.
Okay.
We didn't have, let's see, C. Wasn't aware of any exposed bedrock or. Bedrock within five feet, thought that was fine. A thousand tons of material.
Before you go on, I did look at the, I did look at soil maps and they did sort of have. Bedrock, maybe three feet, but I don't really know that it's happening where they're doing construction. So. I, if if everybody else is okay, I'm okay leaving that as small impact. Okay, sorry, go ahead, D.
The applicant did provide a cut and fill calculation on their plans. There is an excess of soil, there'll be removal of soil from the site. When you convert the the tons to cubic yardage, they exceed the thousand ton removal. So we're recommending that item one D be marked moderate to large impact. I didn't have another one for impact on land. I don't know if you want me to read these out loud or if anybody just wants to wave their hand if they they have any other. Any other items. It's, this project's going to be completed under one phase. I didn't see anything here that was applicable. Impact on geologic features, this threshold question was answered no, so these other sub questions don't apply. Impact on water. Item three D and three K. Three D is. Action involves construction within or adjoining freshwater wetland. Yes. And K. The proposed action may require the construction of a new expansion of an existing wastewater treatment facility. They're installing a new septic system. So that would trigger, obviously, that's probably, and it's outside of the buffer, so it's going to be viewed as a positive, but. They hit that question, they'll they'll have a simple response to that one in the part three. Impact on groundwater. Item four, we didn't have any. Any changes here, any suggested changes. Impact on flooding, item five, there is the one hundred year floodplain does go on to the property. There is construction proposed within the floodplain. They will require a flood development permit when the the building is specter. So item five B would have to get marked moderate to large. Impact on air, no. Plants and animals, there is a loss of flora, but they didn't hit any of these thresholds. So while this is marked, yes, we are okay with all these being marked smaller, no impact. Item eight, agricultural, not applicable. Item nine, impact on aesthetics, you know, this is a question that's asking whether the proposed use or development is. Obviously different from or in sharp contrast to existing. It's currently being used for the same use. This is an expansion of that use, but it's not, in our opinion. It's currently being used for the same use. This is an expansion of that use, but it's not, in our opinion, significantly different. So we, we left this alone at being marked no.
So I had a question on that one, and we didn't really talk about that. And it might come up in a different, might be more appropriate in a different area, but one of the things that, actually, you pointed out on the lighting plan is that the lights are on from dusk to dawn up in the parking lot. And it seemed to me that that would be something that would be visible new, and it's certainly going to be visible year round by anyone from the lake. And I, I just wanted to ask maybe Dawn to make sure that it doesn't I, I don't understand why the lights would need to be on. You know, all that, all that many hours. It doesn't seem like the the typical use is, you know, beyond. I know sometimes there's fire and ice nights or some kind of event at the club, but certainly not, you know, the midnight to dawn might not be needed or, and, and just it, it seemed excessive. And, and it seemed like that lighting on that hill could be kind of detrimental, not only to the, you know, the animals, but to just the aesthetics of, of being across the lake and seeing lights on over there.
So Chairman Dawn from inside, I'll just jump in on that. I, I don't believe that that's that the lights are supposed to be noted to be on till dawn. I will clarify with the applicant what the correct hours are supposed to be for those parking lot lights.
They're only on when needed.
Thank you, John, for jumping in.
They're put on man, they're put on manually when they're needed and they're shut off.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
John, John Assuma, club manager.
Thank you, John. Yeah, I, I was sure. It was on the lighting plan that said, and, and I said, I, I can't really believe that if there is a security issue, maybe a motion detector light somewhere or something, but yeah, so if that's updated and that's not correct, then I withdraw my comment about aesthetic resources, but I, I really thank you. I hope you'll revisit that.
We will. We'll revise that for the next submission.
Great, thank you.
A number ten is marked yes, because the site is located within a district and has a building that's listed on the register, but we already have a no impact letter from Shippo. So while this is marked yes, everything else is marked no. You know, we, I think we had had ten A in our memo. We actually, I don't, I don't think we had that revised letter yet, Dawn. So if you send that to me, the letter of no impact, without the conditions, I think we could eliminate number ten entirely.
Okay, yeah, we have that. We'll share that with you.
Right. I didn't have anything on open space and recreation. It's, it's not reducing. It's, if anything, it's increasing recreation. Impact on critical environmental areas. It's not within a critical environmental area. Impact on transportation. We don't believe that's subject to change. Impact on energy. You know, there might be some modest increase, but I don't think it rises to the level needing to be reviewed. Impact on noise, odor and light. Didn't hit the threshold here, especially with the conversation just had.
Yeah, I, I would say that's the other place where I, it could have come up, but thank you so much for, for, you've made me much more at ease with the current, the current, the current selections here.
No impact on human health. And then consistency with the community plans. They appropriately marked this yes because of the existing non-conforming use, the expansion of that use. So we just wanted them to under seventeen C, the proposed action is inconsistent with the local land use plans or zoning regulations. I know that sounds harsh, but that that is what, what it is. I think this has to be marked moderate to large, and they provide some evaluation in the part three, and hopefully that evaluation helps them with their submission to the ZBA. Those are the facts. Consistency with community, community character. I didn't have any comments on that. So those were the items that are listed in our memo under comment number three. And again, you just the only result of marketing, marking these boxes moderate to large is that there's a narrative that's provided in a part three that kind of explains away the yeah, well, the impact and identifies potential mitigation or why it's not an impact.
Jan?
Yeah.
On that question of moderate to large impact, the fact that, I mean, I brought up before, the fact that it has been existing and there is no negative. I mean, have been no reports of by neighbors of objectionable activities, et cetera, et cetera. Wouldn't that sort of somehow mitigate the fact that or keep it in the category of no or small impact, even though it's it's requires a ZBA consideration?
I mean, the threshold question, is it compliant with zoning? The answer to that question is no. It's not. So yet, the, the way the, the instruction read is that requires some evaluation. Right. And perhaps what you just mentioned, Jerome, is the explanation that goes into the part three, but it can't be left alone.
No, I know that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that Jerome, those, those items that Jan's identified, a lot of those are just driven by the, the format of the part two itself. And all that leads to is a part three that then can explain why, even though marked mo- moderate to large, it may be, you know, of no consequence or you know, of, 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 you know, of minimal impact.
Yeah. So the fact that it's existing non-conforming, you know, I think is, helps with that. And I, similar to some of the others, I, I think I, I think it's important to go through the process as the process is called out for us because it protects all of us in the future, should there be any discussion about whether we took appropriate steps. And I just think, so, and, and Jan, thank you for going through this so quickly and thoroughly. Any other discussion on this? And, and I hope again, I think many of these things have already been are known and addressed in some of the plans that, that there are. So I'm hoping that we could get the the part three submission and, and really move to the next step in next month. Jan, did you have any other comments about being for the, your memo that, that we should go over?
Not really. I would point out that the applicant did provide a a mitigation plan. Still evaluating whether it meets the one-to-one threshold. We did comment that felt that there were some additional locations that could be planted with trees, given the amount of tree loss. The other thing is, although if you you notice when the, when the board conducted the sidewalk, but I, I remember even back when, when several years ago, the applicant was before the board with a similar application. There was a big emphasis on trying to reduce some of the erosion that was occurring on, on the existing gravel driveways, some of which are quite steep. And when I was out there with, with Jim Bates last week, you know, I, I observed that again, and especially along the the driveway down to the lake. It's all gravel, or it eventually transitions into asphalt, but the portion that's gravel is steep and there's a lot of washouts. There's a water bar that was clearly installed by the applicant that, you know, was meant to try to send some of the water that's coming off the driveway into the wooded areas, but there's, there's some erosion occurring. And, you know, I'm a big proponent of of trying to find mitigative measures that will have a biggest bang for your buck, have a real beneficial impact. So you know, I think that trying to develop a plan or incorporating mechanisms to reduce some of the erosion on the existing site, you know, and existing improved surfaces, mainly the driveway, would go a long way. And I think should be considered in their overall mitigation plan. So I'll leave you with that. The other items, you know, we, we obviously thought that the, the removal of the asphalt walkway was was significant and definitely a good step in the right direction. I don't know that we had any other real big ticket items in our, in our memo.
Dawn, do you know if the fire department has weighed in or has, has communicated at all with you all?
So since we received the original memo from the building inspector, you know, there were some fire related comments on that. We haven't, you know, we responded to, to most of those comments, provided some diagrams, and we haven't heard anything back yet. So we're still waiting.
Okay.
To hear back from them.
Dawn, do, do you know if, was that a, a direct submission from you to the applicant, or do you feel, or was it the building department submitting the plans to the fire department?
I'm not sure. We didn't make a direct submission. We submitted to the planning board. All of, all of our submissions have been through planning board office. So
Okay. So you, you might want to just touch base with the building inspector. It's possible that those plans never made it to the, the fire department. He'll usually work with you to coordinate getting the plans over there.
So when I, when I, I did actually speak with, it was Joe, right? Joe?
Joe supposedly coordinated with the fire department.
Which is what he told me. Correct.
Yep.
Right. Because I did speak with him within the last couple of weeks before he moved on. And he said he had spoken with them and he had been waiting for feedback from them as well. So
I wouldn't hesitate to reach out to Jeff and just see what the status is of that.
Okay.
Great. Okay. Any other comments, questions from anyone here? Okay. Thank you. I think I hope we will get the part three and we'll be able to move forward next month. Thank you. And thanks, John, thank you for clarifying the lighting. I was I was concerned and I appreciate that update.
No problem.
Thank you.
Janet, just, I'm sorry, just so I have the direction I need. We, we had made, I, I just described the, the comment about the existing erosion issue. Is that something that, I'd like just to get the board's input on that, whether we should work with the applicant to pursue that, or whether you feel that the mitigation that was submitted was appropriate? I don't want to be I'd just like to, I guess, direction. We've had it in a couple of our memos, but I don't want to keep it in there if the, the board isn't does not
Okay, so personally, I mean, I have noticed some erosion not I don't remember if it was exactly where on the driveway it was on the sidewalk, but there was some, I don't, didn't know how much of that would be eliminated by the, the new drive, but I certainly think to the extent that it exists either on the parking lot or on the driveway and can be addressed, I would support that. Look for others to give their view.
Can I weigh in for a second here, Chairman, if you don't mind, before we move forward? So I believe Zach mentioned this at the last meeting. There is an East of Hudson watershed retrofit project slated to happen on the site. I'm not sure where that's going to go, but it could possibly deal with some of this. That's one item I just wanted to bring up. And, you know, we'll take a look at it and see if there's something that we can do relatively easily to roll into the project. I'm going to be headed over there. I'll be in Lewisboro this week and I'll take a look at it while I'm there. See, and if there's something simple that we can roll into the plans next submission, we'll have that in there. If, you know, that's what you want to do, want us to do, and just keep in mind that removing the existing driveway down to the lake and putting in all of that buffer planting, anything that gets down, that may get down to the parking lot helps buffer any of that from getting down to the lake, plus all of the stormwater management that we're putting in. It catches runoff from all of that already.
It's, it's really what I observed was a lot of the gravel from the driveway is running off and being deposited throughout the woods, you know, especially from that, that upper portion, like where the gatehouse is, or the gate where the attendant stands down to the paved at, paved section of the driveway. There's a couple of water bars that, that shoot the water off into the woods and you're getting large gravel and sediment, sediment deposits. And then you could just see how it's getting transported down through the woods there. So there's, there's probably a solution that isn't probably too difficult to resolve. But I mean, that, that's, that's the area that came to my mind. It's just, you know, you got gravel deposits all, all, you know, along the driveway there.
But Dawn, it is, I think Zach mentioned that the East of Hudson work would be up towards the top. So it's possible that would take some of that away, but I think it would be helpful to understand either that better or, or what possibly could be done on that steep driveway portion. If it's that top part, yeah, if, because there are a couple of kind of water, or at least one water by they go over that maybe could be just a little more.
Even if it was just a sump or something that they, you know, collected the gravel and then you were able to dig that out and it just wasn't allowed to continue down the slope. I think it did something similar, Dawn, on, on the town park for the, the cell tower where there's a couple of water bars and it went into you know, some dumps. You know, that's all I was thinking of, you know, just something to control the gravel washouts.
All right. Yeah. Well, we'll take a look at that and we'll either roll something into the plan or we'll talk to you about it the next meeting. So, okay.
Great, thank you. Any, anything else from anyone here? Okay, we'll see you next month.
So I, I just one more thing, you know, Jan had brought up about tree replacement. And, you know, we, we're trying to finalize, I guess finalize is not always the right word, but you know, cross some things off of our list as far as meeting the requirements of the board and knowing what you want from us and that issue. You know, that keeps moving forward and, and I'm not sure if you are satisfied with the what we've done, or if you're going to be looking for more. And, and so you know, or if there's further discussion that's needed on that point.
Okay. And I see, John, you have your hand up.
Yeah. If you read the CAC memo, we had a couple of comments about, first of all, we don't think it's a good time to be putting beach trees in with a disease.
Understood. We'll, we'll change the beach trees and take them off the plan and put something else in, in place of that. Thank you. That was a good comment. I should have picked that one up myself.
Yeah, I think we're in line with Jan and saying, try to get it more equivalent to what's being removed in, in certain areas, you know, due to the runoff and, and those kind of comments. But, you know, you have our memo, so.
Yeah. So I think one of the things that Jan pointed out was just a if you sum up the calipers of what's leaving and what's being replaced, it's, as I remember, something like I have it right here, but five hundred leaving and, and a hundred and fifty or something coming in late. I'm sorry. Removing six one six caliber inches and installing a hundred and thirty-five caliber inches total. I mean, I know you're not going to put in trees like the ones you're taking out, but you know, that seems I don't, I don't know. I'll, I'll defer, but I, it would be great if you could get to maybe I don't know, would it's something closer to two hundred, so it would be a third of what's leaving. I, I'm, it just seems really low at a hundred compared, or a hundred and thirty-five compared to six one six, but again, I don't know. Again, I don't know. How feasible it is to put in some of these, put in either larger trees or more of the smaller trees.
They are, uh, they are putting in, the trees that they're putting in are decent size. Um, I think it's three or three and a half inch caliper.
Right.
Um, so they're not small trees, um, and they do have, um, I think greater than one to one. You know, tree for tree, it's just a total size. And that's, you know, that's not something that. We have it in our memo, just so you could see a comparison, but it's not code driven. Um, but I looked at areas, you know, between um the lowest parking lot to the snack bar. Where's, where there's a lot of grading and there's some plant material going in there, but generally lacking trees. And then over by the stormwater basin, um, there's plant material going there, but that, you know, these are going to open up certain areas of the site. Um, and maybe you want, maybe there's a room for handful of trees here or there. You know, I don't. The site is very much wooded, um, so I don't think it's very feasible to replace. You know, caliper for caliper, but we, we, we just identified a couple of areas that we thought would be pretty opened up. Uh, given construction and didn't, weren't receiving a lot of tree replacement in those particular areas, so. You know, I don't, I don't have any number in, in my head. I was just thinking that uh a couple of those spots could use a couple more trees just to close that canopy up a little bit. A little bit more consistent with the aesthetic of what's there today. Just thinking of people, you know, viewing. That slope from the lake or across the lake or from a boat, you're going to have a couple of areas that are really quite open now, um, and the trees would help. Massage out a little bit.
Yeah, it, I think I would tend to defer. And, and move maybe to Yan's comment, maybe more trees, but they don't have to be big, you know, more smaller trees, even if they. Because eventually they will grow, so that would be good.
Okay, so we'll look at those areas um to provide some more trees in that. And, and something else that I want to point out that we had laid out in our letter is, you know. I know you're very focused on um the trees that are being removed, but uh, you know, we have done. Um, a lot of the plantings that we've done recreate more of the layering of the forest, so. Um, but we will gladly look at those locations and provide some more trees.
Yeah, thank you for that. I know that right now it's uh, there aren't that many layers in the, because of. Just deer predation, so it's, it's tough, but um, and so I think that will be an improvement, but. Trees are pretty critical. Okay, great.
Okay.
Any other questions? By anybody. Okay, thank you very much.
Lovely. Thank you all very much.
Okay. Um, so the next item on our agenda. Um, is calendar number oh one dash fifteen PB, calendar number twenty five dash fifteen WP. Calendar number oh six dash fifteen SW. This um is Copia Garden Center at four seventy five Smith Ridge Road, South Salem, New York, and application for a sketch. Uh, plan review, um. Site development plan for unfinished improvements to the existing Copia Garden Center and expansion of the existing use. Onto the adjacent tax parcel. Um, so. This is an application that we reviewed in, in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen. Um, we did go. Uh, I think we started looking at this again in twenty twenty one. We went on the sidewalk in April of twenty twenty one. Um, and. Um, so now we're back again. So who's on for the applicant? Uh, David, okay, you're muted. Oh, there you go.
All right, thank you, uh, Mrs. Chairman. Um. Yes, I just want to say that um, you know, the, the primary reason for the resubmission. As you mentioned, we've gone through a process of uh a number of different submissions. And approvals, and this latest one really addresses um. The memorandum that was provided by, by Yan. Um, and also um addresses your, the last planning board meeting. And also um an onsite meeting that we had in March of uh twenty twenty two. And at that time, um, Yam was there, uh, the town supervisor was present. Uh, I was present along with the owner and applicant, uh, Peter and Jennifer Cipriano. And as previously noted, the prior approvals. Have expired and the applicant is applying for reapproval. In accordance with the memorandums, your, uh, the planning board's reapproval will allow. The applicant to renew the expired building permit and complete all the open work improvements. And I think, I think this is probably one of the most important aspects. Um, of this, and that is that with the approval. Um, from the planning board, this will allow the applicant to complete all of these outstanding work items. Um, unfortunately, the building department, uh, the building permit expired as well. And the building department uh will not renew the, the building permit. Without the approval from the planning board. So essentially, there were um the latest memorandum that we have. Uh, from, from Yan. Um. There are three items, there are three comments that he had. One consisted of the. Um, along East Avenue about um. It would be okay to have temporary landscaping. Uh, displayed along with the permanent landscaping. And he didn't have any issues with that, so long as the permanent landscaping was installed and. Uh, in talking with the applicant, uh, most of it is installed and whatever hasn't been. Will certainly be installed. The other, the other item. Um, is that there was no, the, the applicant wants to remove the internal. Uh, fencing and gates uh within the property and, and again, Yan did not see that as any issue. The third item um, it consists of lot number thirty three. Uh, where we, we're actually requesting, or the applicant is requesting the removal of that from the. Uh, approval of the site plan. Um. And, and deal with lot thirty three as a separate issue. Uh, and, and not have it a part of this site plan approval. Um, I think we think, we think that it's, it's important to allow. The applicant to proceed with completing the project essentially. And the only way to do this is to go through this, this process, pull out lot thirty three. And deal with whatever issues or concerns uh separately, like you might have. So with that, I don't know whether Peter or Jennifer, you would like to make any comments about the lot thirty three? At this point? You're, you're.
Not at this point.
Okay.
You covered everything. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Okay.
Charlie.
You're muted. There we go. I'm a little confused and I wasn't here from the very beginning of this process. Uh, so I have a few questions for Judd. From what I'm hearing and from what I've gathered in previous meetings that I have attended, is there is no site plan? It, it. It just is not, is, there's no approved site plan.
No, there is no, there was a site plan that was approved and that site plan has lapsed, so as of now, there is no site plan.
And I've been involved in a lot of extensions of site plans, but this one does not have an extension.
It, it's lapsed.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. And lot thirty three was in the original. Um, site plan.
Lot thirty three was. Lot thirty three at that point in time was designated as a piece of leased property. That was going to be utilized for vegetable cultivation. Um, private vegetable cultivation, um. And uh. Because of the tie between. The, what I'll call kind of the, the main copia parcel and the fact that the, the, that portion of the Vista Market parcel was being leased. It was pulled into the site plan.
So now we're being asked to look at a few different programs to reinstate the whole thing. The site plan, but take out a portion of the site plan. And not address it, having no idea what's going to be done with it. And I've heard agricultural, this and that. That, to, in my humble opinion, really does have an impact. On the whole site plan.
Yeah, well, I, let me, let me kind of add this with regard to the lot thirty three discussion. So there is currently pending in the town justice court. A zoning prosecution or violation against the owner of Vista Market. With regard to the, the use of lot thirty three for storage. Um. That violation has been returnable before the, the town justice court. I'm not handling that. I spoke with the uh town prosecutor with regard to the uh status of that violation. I am informed that uh Vista Market, the owner of that property and the uh. The lessee of Vista Market prop, property have made a commitment that all of the outdoor storage. Components or whatever is occurring that would violate the zoning code are going to be remedied. I believe that, that's coming back before. Uh, the town justice court for an appearance in August, early August. And I guess my question is if, in fact, that's the case and this outdoor storage. U- use is going to cease on thirty three, where's it going to go? And is that possibly going to create some sort of reorientation, what we're seeing on what I'll call the copia parcel? So. I, you know, I'm not, I, I, I'm not linking the two necessarily legally, but from a practical. Practical standpoint, I think it makes sense to see how that plays out because. There's a zoning violation on thirty three. That was part and parcel of our original approval. And if in fact that is going to occur, and I hope it will. How's that going to influence what is before this board with regard to the um, the now pending site plan application?
I, I, I agree with that, Judd. I, I can't, I don't understand how we can just sort of segment it out. And hope for the future that we look at it again, some other iteration. It seems to me holistically. We, we can't do that. It's still being used as whatever at this point in time. So I, I, I would not be able to um. Opine on that at all, or look at it for a determination.
Jerome.
Well, uh, Judd, clarify if you will. Lot thirty three is not owned by this, the, the applicant. It's owned by Vista Market.
Correct.
So there was some kind of internal agreement between Vista Market and Copia. Uh, for them to uh utilize that property, which we thought was going to be used for agricultural. Personal residential agricultural use, but then there was storage of product, retail product on that property.
When the site plan that lapped was approved, that was what was. Represented as the, the use of lot thirty three was going to be a.
Right.
Basically, a, a, an area of, 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 of plant cultivation, not storage.
Right, so if, if the violation is cured uh in court, in, in the civil court. Uh, and that would be a clean slate, so to speak. And I think, I see, Brown's hand is up, maybe he could clarify.
I.
Uh, the intention.
I, I think the overarching objective from the get go on this has been, let's just get, let's get a, let's get a clean site plan and. Let's get this, let, let's put everybody on a, on a, you know, on a playing field where we know. What a site plan encompasses, what it doesn't. Let's get it developed and get the building permits, get to the COs. And, and let's, let this, let's put this in the rearview mirror.
Exactly. So what existed before and what violation there is, will be cured elsewhere. And uh, what we, what happens in the future is what we're looking for uh on this revised plan.
Right, and just in case anyone is watching this on YouTube and doesn't. Understand quite what we're talking about. The, the Vista Market is currently zoned. Differently than the parcel that Copia is, the main portion of Copia is on, and so that the only. Zoning approved the use that is close is this um private vegetable garden, not as um. Not as a storage component. So with that, I saw Peter, you did have your hand up. Do you have a, a comment?
Yes, in agriculture. Um, when I presented this to the board, I said it was going to be vegetables for private use and for my market, so. In agriculture, putting a plant in the ground is crop cultivation, whether it's a tomato plant or a pine tree. So that's been my argument the whole way through, and I'm going to continue with that argument. Um. The owner of Vista Market has finally agreed to go in front of the zoning board of appeals. That's what he's going to do. As the only access to the former dumping ground. Wood storage, carpet dumping was located where I. Place my plants and grow them on. And it is storage, but it's also a com- component of growing a horticultural crop, which is agriculture. So not only did we apply to the ag dis, for an ag district. We also finally got the permission from the owner of Vista Market to go for the change of the zone as there is no access. To that lot, other than through commercial property, unless a homeowner. Allows for an easement through their property or Frobinswood. Otherwise, that property is landlocked and I don't see how. When it was zoned, it was not zoned commercially. That's all. So that will be in front of the zoning board when they meet. And that's not up to me to decide.
Uh, may, may I ask, Peter, what is allowed in an agricultural district?
Um, everything that gossip, Valley View and Hardscrabble does.
Grow, growing of nursery crop.
So just, actually just review, you can just see what they, what they do.
Well, can, can you raise animals? Can you?
You can, you can do anything a farm does. You can raise animals.
That, that, that's what I was asking.
You can grow on crops, you could.
Right. I, I just, that's, that's where I was getting at.
You can run track, you can run tractors through it when I, when I purchased the property.
Right, and, and I think, and my, my point is, is that really does have a impact on how. The site plan will look in total.
No, actually, when we ran the tractors there, we ran it as soon as we leased it and um. We planted crops there right away. It's no different. It actually would be better as just plant storage, but if. If it, if it becomes part of the ag district, I can do more than plant storage.
Exactly.
But either way, some people like farms.
I live across the street from a farm. I like it too.
But I think the question I would have is that now, so you don't, I don't think you yet have. If I understand correctly, I don't think you yet have agricultural, um. Uh, an agricultural district or the Vista Market parcel. Is that right?
Not, not yet, but in New York, um, all, all land that was used formerly as agriculture continue to be, continue to be used as agricultural.
But even, okay, so if it were approved, does that um overcome the zoning regulations?
I, 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 I'm going to, ultimately, all questions with regard to the propriety of the use of that land do not rest with this board. They rest with the building inspector, they rest with the town prosecutor, they interpret zoning ordinance, okay? Whatever we do, as I said, the objective here is to try to clean up. An existing site plan that has lapsed, let's get this clean and let's move on. There is a zoning violation that has been identified by the building inspector. He is charged with interpreting the zoning code. He is charged with determining what an ag dis. He is charged with determining what an ag district designation would or would not mean. He has made that determination that there is a zoning violation that extends onto lot thirty-three. If there is an application for the ZBA and that cures it, then it cures it. But the, all of that may spill into what this board ultimately has to decide with regard to the. The 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 construct and the orientation of the site plan that's before it. So I I I would say, let's see how the, let's see what happens with the disposition of this lot thirty-three issue. It's outside of our purview, it's with, it's with the town court, it's with the building inspector, it's with the town prosecutor, it's now with the ZBA. ZBA make make sure of this issue or take care of it for all of us. But, you know, un- until that time. You know, we we can move towards doing what we can to advance the site plan application, but um, I I I think. I think there could be, as I said at the outset, some practical implications as to what the outcome of, of of. You know, whatever's decided with regard to lot thirty-three means uh for the copia parcel.
Jerome, I see your hand up, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, so words are important, and Peter, you you made a comment about some people liking agriculture. Implying that maybe we don't because, and that's not the case, we like whatever is approved by the zoning ordinance. So you, you know, it's it's really just a matter of going through the process and cleaning this up. We have no objection, at least I don't, to that parcel being used for agriculture or uh planting, as you said.
Well, I think um. I think it would be interesting and helpful to get this resolved. I'm I'm actually glad to see you back. Because I I feel like we should, as I think, maybe I'm repeating, Judd. You know, it's been, it's been hanging out for a while, um, so I think we should try to move forward, but I, but I think. If it's uh as early as August that we'll hear something back from the um ZBA. That I think we should probably defer this um. I I don't know if that would then say till September that we, we ask to see you again, or. What's the, what's the appropriate timeframe here?
I don't know, um, would, would, here's the question. Would we be allowed to kind of at least finish off some of the. Site plan that was approved and the extension that was missed by us, unforgivably by the board, not. Is it, we missed it, I understand that, but we were approved, and if we can do some of it, it would be helpful, especially along East Street. Um, and that would allow us to kind of get working on it, but it, but if we were told to stop, so we stopped, I mean, we're not doing anything, but if you guys. Have points being mentioned by neighbors, we can probably address those by completing some parts of the site plan.
Uh, so that would take approving the site plan and. I sort of echo, I think, what I've heard from Charlene in that until I know what the resolution. Is going to be um. With, with the materials that are there, whether there's still going to be an access way, you know, to that. To that lot, I I feel uncomfortable, I don't feel like we can. Finalize a site plan, at least I'm not comfortable saying I finalized a site plan. Um, without having some resolution to that issue.
Chairman, I I'd like to uh interject. What if, you know, again, I'm just kind of throwing this out. What if the site plan had been submitted without lot thirty-three right from the get-go? Would you have approved the site plan? And and I guess what I'm looking at right now, and why I'm wonder, why I'm throwing this out, is because by. Not taking lot thirty-three out. You know, of the site plan approval and dealing with it totally separately. As a separate issue, without doing that, it doesn't permit the applicant. Uh, to proceed with finalizing all of the work that had been previously approved. Under not only the, the previously approved site plan, but also the building permit. So right now, everything is at a standstill. So I I think what. I understand your concern and and I realize that. Um, y- you know, you certainly would be reluctant to do that, but I guess in my mind. Why, if if I reframe it. That is lot thirty-three were never incorporated from the, in, you know, from the get-go. Would you have approved that site plan?
So, that's a little hard for me to answer since I wasn't on the board at that time, and I don't know what. All was part of the discussion, um, Jerome, go ahead.
Well, let me rephrase the question or throw it back to you. If lot thirty-three were not in uh incorporated in the original approval. Would the functions that are now on. Or that were intended or partially were on thirty-three, would they be used, uh, would they be eliminated altogether? Or would they be someplace else on the site? In other words, we're dealing with a hypothetical here. But we, what we deal with are are essentially. Uh, accurately drawn and presented plans that satisfy the function that you're intending it to function as. So the question is not, what if it weren't on the plan? The question is if you were gonna grow anything there or. Use, would would that alter the the site plan?
You do.
We do.
We do grow things there.
I know, I know, but, so if that weren't.
Here's the thing, I'm okay, the, listen, I've already, you've already, without having a CEO, and I know it was my fault. And the board was against doing anything. Um, in the, in kind of, because I missed the extension, which is, which happened and I, and I'm sorry about it, but it it's already too late for me to do a refinance. The whole idea of trying to get back to the board and get a CEO quickly was because of, it was a good time to refinance to save. Save us three or four hundred thousand dollars. It's that boat is, that ship has sailed. Um, so. We have time, we have time for the appeals, we have time for whatever it takes to get this moving forward and. I, we're okay, I I'm okay with, listen, construction's costing a lot of money. If you gave me an approval with a deadline within three months, it would not happen. Um, and that's, that's the reality of our situation right now, so we're, we're okay with seeing how. How our ag comes back to us. How the owner of Vista Market, the fifty-one percent owner, has. Will go in from the zoning board, which will hopefully. Um, resolve some of these issues that last year he wouldn't do it. This year he's, he wants to do it because last year they were going to sell the complete. Share of it, but he he held on to it because of these violations. So he can't really sell his final portion, so he's going to work at it with with us and a. And a local lawyer, that's, he's already hired, so.
Okay, and so, Judd, I think you said this was going to the ZBA in August?
I, and I'm unaware of a ZBA application, I, what I was told was that it's, we're. An adjourn date before the local justice court is in August, so, but if. One of, but certainly, and a typical. Response to this type of violation is an application to the ZBA, I'm just unaware if one's been made.
I think they're, they're trying to resolve, currently they have, um, I guess, uh, there's. There are, there's like a residence on site that's been a residence since like eighteen twenty, but it's not allowed some somehow in there. When they were approved, it doesn't make any sense to me because it was already a residence, but they had, they have to clean that up a little bit.
Okay.
And that's what they're going in front of the, the judges for right now.
So, I'm still trying to figure out, I guess, when. Um, does it make any sense if there is some adjudication results, but no ZBA approval for, or. The applicant to come back, or when, when. I I feel sort of, we have the, the building inspector letter from last year, we have. You know, some changes, when, I'm, do we say. Come back next month and tell us what's changed or come back in September, I'm, I'm a little.
I I I suggest, why don't we come back next month and see where we are? If it's a short discussion, it's a short discussion, if it's a longer discussion, it's a longer discussion. In other words, let's see, let's see where the justice court. Process is at that point in time, let's see if there is a ZBA application. Um, I I think this is an application, it's worthy of just kind of keeping on the agenda month to month and as we go through.
So is that okay with you, Peter?
Yes, perfect, that'll be fine.
So, because. I I think it's been said before, you know, we are interested in seeing this move to completion. Um, okay, so, great, I guess we will look to see you. And August and hear what, what new news we have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, good night.
Good night. The, the next item on our agenda is calendar number eleven dash twenty-two PB, this is the Goldensbridge Village Center. Um, half of New York State Route twenty-two in Goldensbridge, New York, and this is the application for the installation of EV charging stations. Um. And I'm not sure who is on for the applicant.
I'm Chris Carmody, I'm with the Design Build Company, um, delivering this project. Uh, we're plug-in stations out of Valation, New York. Also here with some members of the New York Power Authority who are the, the owner of the site, we have Mick Peretta. And John Markowitz with the Power Authority, and then Nancy Tassillo is here as a representative of the owner of the property.
Great.
Yeah, so I I have a short presentation to just kind of give some context here, if that works for you guys. Um, you know, feel free to speed me along as we go through here. One second. Or is that up there?
Yes.
Okay, great. So Plug-In Stations is working with the New York Power Authority on the Evolve New York program. Uh, which is a program designed to build out a network of high-power charging stations throughout the state. Uh, primarily tar- targeting corridor, throughway corridor areas. And high-density residential areas, um. And, you know, the idea is that we're sort of building out the backbone of the faster charging infrastructure. So, you know, while we all see a lot of chargers going in across the state, there's fewer of these sites. They're designed to deliver a hundred miles of driving range in about five or ten minutes, depending on your vehicle.
Wow.
Um. So, so it's kind of the next generation of charging in which we're trying to approach gas station speeds. Uh, to make it a more reasonable choice for people to buy an electric field vehicle for their next car. Um, so just to give a sense of, you know, what these sites look like, we've built about a dozen of these sites over the past year with the Power Authority. And this is a, some pictures from some of them. Um, you guys see them, the cursor point?
Yes.
Okay, so, you know, so the the components of the system that we're looking to install, um, you know, we work with the local utility. Um, to put in a pad mount transformer here, and that converts their, uh, their, their line wires. Uh, down to a usable voltage for us. Um, then it runs through this, I'm sorry. This gray piece of hardware, and that's just like, that has the metering equipment in it and the distribution equipment for the chargers, and then it runs into these cabinets. And since the car batteries operate on DC, that's essentially just a big power converter that takes the AC power from the grid. Converts it to DC power that's usable by the batteries, and then that runs out to these dispenser units. And these have the credit card reader and the user interface, so the driver doesn't have to interact with the heavy power equipment, they're sort of. Um, you know, entering the credit card or payment information, um, and then plugging their vehicle in at, at the parking space. So those are the components of the system we're trying to put together. Um, and this last image down in the bottom here is. Is um, an elevation view of what the site would look like at the Goldensbridge Center there. Um, so essentially, we're putting in, we're hoping to put in uh six of these chargers, you can see five of them facing us. And then this one is designed for ADA use, um, you'll see from the. Uh, plan view how that, how that looks, and here's our service equipment, that gray cabinet behind that are the. Our conversion cabinets, and then over here is the utility transformer. Uh, so we've been working with this parcel uh for some time now. Um, we originally designed this site to be located in this part of the parking garage, or parking. Uh, the shopping plaza, uh, across from the pizza place. Uh, but it turned out that conflicts with their planned redevelopment of the parcel, um. You know, they're planning on expanding the parking lot and adding some residential units here. Um, so then we moved our site location over here. Um, and I I'm sure you're familiar with this parcel in pasture reviews, probably more so than we are, but. Um, there's two entrances, there's one over here on the one end where the, I guess there's going to be some residential units here, and then there's a second entrance. Uh, right next to our site, um, so the idea for us is. Drivers will come in here, and and this is right across from the big parking lot for the, the Goldensbridge uh train stop. Uh, so the drivers will come in here, loop around in this section, and it's kind of its own little enclave here, and then we'll have the chargers. And I'll, I'll zoom in there a little bit more, um. So here's the site, so again, here's that Golden Bridge Road, that's the Goldensbridge parking lot, so you come in. The entrance here, loop around this uh little embankment, and then all the charging equipment will be tucked in here. Um, so these fixtures, again, just sort of representative of the site. You know, that's that green transformer, which you would see. Right as you come into the location here, and then, you know, these are what the, the stations will look like in the spaces there. Uh, so we've played with this layout a lot, we think that this is the most conducive to, you know, not interfering too much with the future redevelopment of the parcel. Um, and then, you know, there's some constraints as to where this utility transformer can be placed, um, so this is kind of how we've. Worked it out, um, over the course of several design iterations. Um, so we did have a conversation with Jan, um, you know, I think it's been six weeks or so since then, and um. He shared the concern that, you know, there, there might be some issues with, um, you know, these people coming into this newly redeveloped plaza. They don't want to be looking at this power equipment right here along the road, um. So our suggestion there was, and we've spoken with the utility about this, and um, you know, what we can do. Is coming in here, uh, just plant some screening right along the road so that the transformer is masked. And um, you know, these photos are some examples of some other sites where we've done that, um. Now, obviously, these are some arborvitae in their earlier stages of their life, and um. Down here, uh, we didn't actually build this one, but they used a juniper to hide the power equipment there. Um, and then Jan's other comment was that, just the way we had the ADA striping here, um, this is something that the Power Authority developed. Um, to be most conducive to ADA vehicle usage, but he pointed out that it doesn't conform to the ADA requirements. That we're following um for Goldensbridge, um, so, you know, he he asked that we consolidate those two access aisles. Into a single access aisle, so that's easily enough accommodated. Um, so it's essentially, you know, where we're at with the program, I'll just go back to the other slide, um. So I guess at that point, I just open it up for, for questions on the project, I know that's kind of a lot, all at once, um, so please. I think you're on mute.
Thank you, maybe I'll start off with um, a couple of questions about, so. The screening here is just going to be in that one green um slot. Would, would people out on the roadway see the back of a. I don't know, the other equipment that's that big white stuff, I mean, would, would it be possible to put something. Sort of perpendicular to the green, but on the.
In this way?
Yeah.
Oh, you know what, let me, um.
Looks like there's some, might be some trees there, I don't.
Yeah, there are a lot of trees there, and let me. So here's, uh, let me just uh zoom in on these pictures a bit. So, if you look at the site, uh, this is a good picture of it, so here, you know, our chargers will be at the nose of these spots here. So there's.
We're not seeing it, we're seeing.
No, okay, sorry. Um. Am I back, am I back there?
Okay.
Okay, so um, so these are the spots, uh, the bulk of the chargers will be at the nose of these parking spaces. So you'll see between the roadway and those spaces, there's some pretty dense foliage here.
Okay.
Um, so we were thinking, you know, that that covers the view from that direction for the most part. I mean, we'd certainly be open to extending that.
Yeah.
That line.
It's interesting, I saw some, a utility cabinet recently that had like um, ferns and stuff all painted on it and I was like, oh, that's neat. But um, yeah, I I get what you're doing. So that it's helpful to have that, um, have some screening there to make it blend in a little bit. The other question I have is, it, and it looks like in all the photos, the the charging units are actually right up against the curb. Um, and I don't know if that's, if somebody, and there's a picture with snow and stuff, is does that get in the way or it just seemed to me that? Putting it, tell me why that is.
So the reason we put it put that way is we're trying to follow as closely as possible the ADA recommendations for gas pumps and for just facility, facilities in general. And that requires us to keep the front of the unit within eight inches of the drivable surface. So if somebody is in a, in a wheelchair, just so that they can reach the operable parts of the station. And um, you know, we, we really put a lot of emphasis on getting the front of the station as close as possible to the drivable surface. So that's the reasoning there. I mean, I think you have a valid concern also, but you know, that's sort of probably.
If there's guidelines that exist that you're, that you're sticking with, that helps to explain it. I just, I was sort of baffled, okay? Um.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. Um. I don't know if anybody else has any comments or questions. I think it makes sense that our next step would be to refer this to the building inspector and perhaps to ACARC.
Sorry, I'm not familiar with the acronym.
Oh, okay, ACARC is um, is built, basically, I can, they look at the I've architectural, hmm, design, something Kirsten will help me out. But it's um, basically, they look at.
Architectural review.
Yeah, it it, they look at the um, compliance with community character and appearance and so forth. And I think they would be very interested in seeing the um, the screening that you've proposed. Um. So. Um. So actually, I should ask Jan first if you want to um, go through any comments that you have on this. And maybe if you stop, if there aren't questions about this, maybe you stop sharing and we'll see each other.
Sure, just, I just wanted to, before I stop, one thing I just thought of. Um, the screening there, it stops at this point because that's the property line. So I don't know, I think that's state DOT property there. So, you know, maybe our solution is to bend this around just so that there's more coverage there.
Oh, nice.
Maybe that's too much detail, I don't know. Um, I'll stop sharing now.
No, but I think, I think that would be um, you know, doing what you can to to screen that would be, would be helpful.
Okay.
Okay, Jan.
Um, yeah, we, Chris, I don't know if you you saw it, but we have a memo um, July fifteenth. Um, one of our comments was submit uh, photograph, representative photographs, which you just shared tonight, very helpful. Um, did you get the memo? I just want to make sure you have it.
I I did not get the memo. Um, but maybe we have it somewhere.
Okay, uh, I won't go through all, all of it. Um, the landscaping was, I thought, you know, the, if there was any comments, they would probably deal with landscaping. So I think your solution is um, is helpful. Um, there, there are some requirements in the code regarding the dimensions of parking spaces. Uh, and they are nine feet wide by eighteen. I think you had nine by seventeen. We can go down to sixteen feet wide when there's a, an overhang, uh, when the vehicle can overhang a curb, but the the bollards would prevent you from doing that. Um, so just make sure that from a code perspective, you can have an eight foot, eighteen uh, foot length space and then still have the twenty-five feet drive aisle behind it. Um, because those are the the code requirements. I think it looked to me like.
It looks doable.
Yeah, look, it looks, looks doable. So um, other than that, it was just, you know, uh, illustrate the limits of disturbance and um, you know, if you need any, I don't know if, any connections to the utility pole in the state right of way require any sort of DOT permits. Uh, we just want to be made aware of any other permits that you think you need from any other agencies, including the.
Sure.
Um. Uh, zoning, there's zoning setbacks. I'm not sure if the utility equipment needs to comply with the zoning setbacks. That's the reason why you're going to the building inspector for a zoning review, but you should have the setback lines on, you know, the front and side, probably just the front yard setback, zoning setback um, on the drawing.
Um. Okay, is that note in the memo?
Yeah, yeah, this is all.
Okay. All right.
And then, um, you know, your plan set was really comprehensive. It had a lot of um, electrical diagrams and stuff that we could probably peel out of the site plan set. So I just, I listed drawings that were probably just um, a bit too technical for the site plan. Um, so we can condense our site plan package.
Sure.
You'll get the memo, read it over. If you have any comments, please let me know, but uh, the presentation was helpful.
Yes, and could, before I forget, could you um, send the present, a copy of the presentation to Kirsten? And we'll make sure it becomes part of the package. The, um, especially because it addressed some of the comments that uh, Jan had made about showing us photos and and screening. Um, okay, so. Oh, sorry, did somebody want to say something? Um, what I would look for is is consensus to um, send this to the building inspector and ACARC. So if I could get thumbs up from the planning board members. Okay, great. Yep, okay, so um, uh, Kirsten will make sure that this, a copy of this gets to the building inspector and ACARC. And I, and I think it would be helpful in that, you know, to have the photos there as well, um, as they see that. Um. I think. Other than that, what, do we need to do a um, public hearing on this? Can we waive this? What, what happens next?
Um, it's a site plan approval and the public hearing is waivable um, by the board's discretionary to type two action under SECRE, so you don't have any SECRE uh, actions. Um, I think once you get um, letters back from the building inspector and ACARC, you'd probably be in a position to act on it.
So is it too early to ask you to start to draft a resolution?
It's fine by me, we could have it for the next meeting.
And then if we hear back from the building inspector and ACARC by that time, or whenever we hear back, we presumably be ready to take position. Okay, I just want, anybody on the board who has a problem with that, please speak up. Okay, um, so that's our plan. So um, thank you, I guess that would be uh, we can, we can try to see you um, next month. And if we've heard back from ACARC by then, um, maybe we can take some action.
Fantastic.
And just for the, the applicant's clarification, Kirsten, correct me if I'm wrong, they have to make an application to ACARC, right? There's a step that, yeah, okay.
And our next meeting is August tenth.
So get the application in quickly.
Okay, yeah, we're on it. I think we've drafted some of those already.
Okay, good.
All right, thanks for having us, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, as I wait for everyone to move around the screen. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a wetland permit review. This is calendar number fifteen dash twenty-two WP, calendar number oh seven dash twenty-two SW. This is the Reenie Langell Residence at fifteen Benedict Road in South Salem, New York. It's an application for garage, cabana, pool and patio. Um, this was before us in May of twenty-two. We did have a site walk in June and um, we have a new submission and uh, they are back with us this month. So um. Who is Ken, oh, Alan.
I think I'll start.
Take it away.
If I may, good evening, uh, Matt and Chair and myself, the planning board. Um, perhaps I can share the screen just to sort of go over the site plan changes.
Sure.
Hopefully that's visible.
Yes.
Good. Um, so since we last appeared before the planning board, um, the applicants, James Rennie and Liz Langell, decided to modify the site plan. Um, now just sort of run through what the changes are. The garage cabana didn't change really at all. What has changed was that previously, maybe I'll just show this too. There was a proposed um, addition on the, I call it covered porch in the front and a patio expansion, that's the two-car garage. But the, what what we've done is actually eliminated from the plan the um, the addition to the front facade of the house. So that uh, that addition has been removed. Um, instead, the the mudroom addition is actually in the northeast corner of the the house. Um, essentially over an existing flagstone patio, which you may remember from your site walk. Um, and also the walkways and patio space around the pool have been modified. The pool has not changed, it's still forty-seven by sixteen, still the same dimensions. And some of the formal garden plantings are proposed between the house and the pool. Uh, there are also other planter beds in the west side of the front of the house and also on the east side of the house adjacent to the new mudroom addition. Uh, the other thing that we have done, um, as per the comment of the planning board was to um, decrease the backup space outside of the garage and cabana. Uh, we're providing a maximum of twenty-eight feet nine inches and actually it's less than that. Um, you know, at these, um, at the northern end and southern end. And also provided additional space between the parking and the bros entry court and the um, um, and the, and I'll say the front facade of the house. Um. And I I will also point out that I, I realize that I made a mathematical error and I apologize for that in the first submission. Um, but so things happen sometimes. Um, I'll just say, in the original submission that you reviewed back in April, um, there was actually, um, a kind of, I think, the increase was actually nine hundred four square feet, not ten thousand, which I calculated, I apologize for that. Uh, but under this revised plan, I calculated an overall increase of eleven hundred seventy square feet of new impervious surfaces within the wetland buffer. And I'll point out that the wetland buffer covers virtually the entire property because there's wetlands. Um. You know, the state wetland is actually located to the north. There's the Waukeahbach River on the west, there's another wetland area to the south. And when you combine them all, um, it essentially takes, I'll say, the essentially the entire property. But anyway, so those are the changes to the plans since we um, we appeared last. And um, you know, we saw the comments that were prepared from um, colored sessions. And these are all things that we will be addressing. Um, I would like to say also that we have reached out to Sarah Polczek-Lajczyk of D E C. Her comment with regard to for DC wetland permit is that if you're planting and not using mechanized equipment and doing planting by hand, it would not be necessary to get a state wetland permit. I just wanted to point that out. Um, and with that, Ken, I don't know if you have any other additional comments uh, you would like at this time to um, uh, provide or uh, I'll turn it over to the board.
Uh, thank you, Alan. Uh, no, I I don't have any additional comments. I just will say that um, uh, the Lang, Liz and and James thought hard and long about the addition and they do prefer to have this addition back. Um, it it would suit their family needs more. It provides not only a mudroom space, but also a small breakfast area there. That were, this area is where the kitchen is. So um, with their two young boys and growing family, that they needed that uh, bigger area back there. Uh, unfortunately, this does require variance. So we do have to go back to the ZBA. We um, we are hoping to get our denial letter shortly so we can revisit them. Um, but um, w- we would, we did want to propose, show the, you all these improvements, right? You know, prior to us going there.
Okay, thank you. Um, well, I do. Um, so I know, well, maybe I'll ask Jan to go through his memo first um, before I add to it. So Jan.
Sure. Um, a lot of our items have been addressed and since last meeting, I was able to walk the property with Alan. I was happy to hear about the miscalculation because it changed our view of the project a bit. Um. The DC, Alan is the, there's no other improvements in the DC buffer other than planting stormwater.
Correct. Yeah, all the stormwater is completely outside the hundred-foot DEC wetland buffer. Well, the DEC wetland buffer is located here and that's where the level spreader is. And the proposed stormwater management facility is located here. We're actually, we actually have scheduled to do the testing this coming Thursday morning to do the deep ball test, arrange for a guy from your office to come out and witness. Okay, so that's the plan and we'll do the percolation test shortly thereafter.
Um, the, the only real comment we have of any significance is comment number three. The wetland mitigation plan right now is calculated based on the net increase in impervious cover, which is just over a thousand square feet. The code requires that mitigation be provided for um, all uh, disturbances within the wetland buffer. That is a ratio of one to one. Um, so I I did speak to Alan about that in the field, is aware of it. And I would assume that um, the mitigation plan will be revised. We also talked about seeing if there is any way to incorporate some mitigation on um, I don't know the direction, but between the driveway and and the river, um, some of the runoff coming from, from the existing driveway, maybe there's some way to diffuse that or treat that, run it through a um, vegetative buffer. There was some disturbance and erosion in certain areas we observed. So, you know, I think that the, the river is the real um, gem here. And if there was um, any ability to provide some mitigation there as you revise your mitigation plan, it, I think it would go a long way. But other than that, our comments are close to being addressed.
Yeah. I would like to point out that that area to the west of the driveway between driveway and the river is actually quite wooded. So there's just a very narrow strip where something may be possible. But Jan and I actually looked at it pretty carefully.
Okay, Jerome, go ahead. You're muted.
It seems to me that since the plan first came to us, uh, there've been some significant improvements. And I'm wondering if we might consider letting this go as an administrative uh, review at this point.
Um, I, we, we heard it's got to go to the ZBA. So I think that that might be um, one of the things to consider. Uh, the, the other thing I did want to mention, um, and I guess it's echoing a little bit of what Jan said about the slope to the river. If, if the fence is coming down, I'm a little concerned that, I don't know, kids kicking balls down, things going down there. I, I would like to see um.
The fence was, is not coming down.
Uh, okay, I misunderstood that, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, there's going to be a new fence, uh, but essentially around the perimeter of the backyard. So there is a new fence.
There's a new pool fence, but the existing stock gate fence will remain.
Yeah, this part will definitely remain.
Alan, we can't see your screen, you're not sure.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
But the um.
Let me reshare.
The one of the, the thing that, so now that you have that, um. it looks like you've made a turnout by, so that someone can back out of the garage and back sort of into the, I guess it's to the north there, that little thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I still, I'm, I remain somewhat concerned about the, you know, building up on top of that steep slope down to the river. Although now that I know the fence is there, that stockade fence along the sort of top of the ledge there, that top of the ridge, I feel a little better about that.
The note does say it's to be removed, so I'm not sure.
It's really from this point forward where the.
I see.
Fence is going.
I see. Okay.
So I'm sorry, where is it stained? Where is it stained? Could you show again?
Yeah, behind the garage.
This point forward, but here from the pool fence to the south, it's actually going to remain.
Right, right. I see that.
Okay, I, I, that's where I had not understood the break there.
I think what we had, Jen has spoke about on site. I don't know who brought it up on the, on the visit, but maybe we can create a swell, which we would, which would direct the water more to the mitigation area and not to the steep slope so that it would have more time to be absorbed into the landscaping and not just go right to the steep part of the slope. That was our intention from the beginning.
Okay, yeah. And so that, I'm so relieved about the fence. I was just thinking, you know, anything from, you know, snow to, as I said, kids playing ball on the thing and the ball's running down the river. I, I, I'm glad you're leaving that fence there. Okay. So that was one of my, my big concerns and still, you know, making sure it's stabilized after, after you put the garage, sorry, the parking area beyond the garage there. Okay, now that this is up, I'm sorry, you put this up to show us something else. Where, where do you think future mitigation is going to go or additional mitigation?
Again, I think when this gets expanded, it will end up coming through here. Kind of like, this is kind of like their garden area, but it will be throughout here. There's a whole line of evergreen trees that have been planted for screening purposes of the neighbor. But I think there'll be some plantings here. And I think in this area too, where it's kind of sparse, there'll be some additional plantings as well. I think that's where it's going to go. Yan and I did look at this area here to see what was available. It's kind of woodsy along this whole edge here. There may be some opportunity to just do a little bit of cleanup off the edge of the driveway, the edge of the driveway is right here. There's a little bit of debris that's been placed there. Probably try to clean that up a little bit. But it's just such a narrow strip here that it's pretty challenging to do that.
Yeah, I, I remember looking at that on the sidewalk. But so again, I, if you go up towards the top of the plan again, I, I still, I sort of echo Yan's of the river is a little bit further away there. But I think anything that can be done to kind of maybe address any runoff that would be going in that direction would be helpful.
Sure.
Maybe it's a little further, further away than, than I had imagined, right behind the other side of the fence at the garage.
Right. Yeah, it actually pulls quite a bit away once you get where the garage is. So it is a fair distance. It's probably close to a hundred feet.
You should also note that the neighbor has a bridge across that river close to where we're putting the new fence. And he has like a variety of sheds there. So, I mean, we, we can mitigate, but once it gets to his property, which is closer to the wetland, there, there's a tremendous amount of impact.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know that we've ever had a site plan, certainly not while I've been on the board for that property. Okay, so. Yan, we had a suggestion from Jerome that this be moved administrative. And I did say, you know, I know we have to go to the Z B A. Typically, we look for, to have Z B A approval before we, we talk about going administrative. Is, what's your view? You're muted.
I'm okay with it. We would, obviously wouldn't issue the wetland permit until they got through the Z B A. So just like you wouldn't issue a planning board resolution, we wouldn't issue the wetland permit. So I think so long as there's, the approval isn't happening before the Z B A, I think you're okay. I'm not sure what Jerome thinks about that, but that's my, that's my story.
No, yeah, you'd be bound in, in terms of what you issue. It can go away admin and you'd wait for the Z B A.
And if there's obviously any, any big news from the Z B A that upsets dramatically the plans, you could come back. All right. So with that, I guess if, well, I guess the first thing would be to get a motion to move this application to administrative. Okay, Jerome, you didn't, I see Jerome's hand, but you're muted.
The host keeps muting me. I would move that pending approval of Z B A, we permit this to go administrative.
Okay, and Bruce, you have your hand up?
I'll second.
Okay, so it's, I think we're sending it administrative, but recognizing that they won't, nothing will be issued until we hear from the Z B A, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, any further discussion on this? And I guess I should ask, John, did you, does C A C have any comments that we haven't addressed here?
No, I think we're pleased with the revisions to the plan. We think they've done a nice job. So we had nothing to, to add.
Great, thanks. Okay, so with that, I guess I'll pull the board. Jerome?
Aye.
Greg?
Yes.
Bruce?
Aye.
Charlene? And I'll also say aye. So we have made the decision to move this administratively, that motion passes. So thank you. Good luck with your, with your plans.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks all of you for your time.
Thank you.
Take care.
Bye.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is calendar number twenty four dash twenty two W P. This is the Fountain Residence at fifteen Pettit Road, South Salem, New York. And this is the application for the restoration of a pond. And I don't know who is on for the applicant.
Steve Coleman, I'm the wetland scientist for the project. And Doug Fountain, who's the son of the owner at fifteen Pettit Road is also on site to discuss it. Doug has done the plans for the project. His mother has lived on the property. What, sixty years, seventy years, Doug? Can, can you hear? I don't know if Doug can hear, but she's an elderly woman that still lives on the site and they've had an existing farm pond. If I could share the screen, I can show you a recent photo of what the pond currently looks like.
Sure.
But. Just one second here. Let me share a screen first. Are you able to see the screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
This is the current existing condition of the pond. And, you know, on the, on the far right in the screen. On the far right of the screen is Pettit Road. Over here is, there's a stone wall, you know, that runs along and the culvert and the stream enters. And then this is the pond on the fountain property. And then to the far left in the screen is a stone spillway where it discharges and leaves the property. The wetland itself is a locally, the pond is a locally regulated wetland per, you know, the town standards. And then this does flow into a state designated wetland, which is L sixteen, which is a large class, class two wetland within the town of Lewisboro. The wetland boundary was flagged for the pond and the state boundary. And we had state personnel visit the site back in the fall or the spring of this year, and they confirmed the wetland boundary. The state boundary starts at the spillway to the pond. And then the pond itself is, according to the state, would be considered just locally regulated. What I wanted to illustrate in the photograph is the, if you can see the cursor, it's, it's the extensive amount of vegetation that's grown. And the pond itself historically averaged about four to five feet. And the fountains are interested in trying to restore that back to that original condition with the, with the accumulated sediment and the vegetation that's come in. The average depth is, is approximately one foot, you know, one to two feet throughout the pond area. You know, so what they'd like to do is dredge the pond and to keep costs down. Their, the desire is to keep the dredge spoils on site. And we looked at potential areas and the, the majority of the property is encumbered with the wetland buffer area. And because of its prior farm uses, a lot of the buffer area has since become overgrown and it's, it's pretty much a hundred percent invasive plants. Primarily multiflora rose is most dominant. And, yeah, but we've got a whole host of the normal, you know, invasive plants that have come in. Yeah, but the areas that we'd like to put the material would be within the buffer area. And what we'd like to do is come in first and remove the invasive species that have become established. And then do the pond dredging and create a, a stockpile area where we could then spread the material once it dewaters within the buffer area. And then we plant it, you know, so it's a combination of being able to keep the material on site to keep, keep the cost down. And then also to restore the functional value of the web and buffer, you know, with the use of the dredge material and the removal of the invasive species. So in terms of sequence, would you want me to go through the plans or details or?
I have a question.
Sure, Jerome.
It appears that large portions of the border of the pond are mowed. Grass area that's mowed. Is that the intention to keep that or would there be some more of a naturalized?
They've kept the edge of the homeowner is always like the lawn edge, you know, coming down to the pond. Yeah, but I, but I have spoken to them about the potential of creating more of a vegetated filter and a buffer along the edge of the pond. And they are amenable to it. It's just a question of, you know, they would like to still have some access, you know, to the pond area. You know, so I think as part of our mitigation strategy, we could certainly look at that as well. One of the challenges is Pettit Road, as you probably know, is a dirt road. You know, that comes in and, you know, there's a lot of sediment that gets transported from both sides of Pettit Road. And we looked at as part of the project to also look at how we could create a sediment for bay and a trap before the water discharges from the road into the pond. And so Doug Fountain has had conversations with the highway department supervisor. And they're willing to work with the fountains to, you know, look at ways that they could minimize some of the transporter sediment that comes into the pond. And so we have a, a rough detail on the plan of creating kind of a, you know, a deep hole with, that's lined with stone and, and then, you know, would allow the material to come in first. And then, you know, the lower flow events, the sediment would have a chance to filter out before it, you know, enters into the pond. Yeah, so that, that's another strategy we're looking at is to try to, you know, get more long-term, you know, sustainability for the pond.
So could you show that part of the plan perhaps? I guess I have, I have a question in, that's a little bit different. But we've, we've seen so much effort at trying to make connectivity between waterways and culverts and, you know, so forth. I, I'm wondering whether, well, first of all, I'm not sure how high your spillway is and whether that's something that is a barrier to any critters, fish, anything that might want to swim between the pond and the stream. And then going towards the for bay, you know, would that basically block people, block people, block animals? Or, you know, is there already a hanging culvert that wouldn't allow upstream? I'm just, I'm curious about what that, what it looks like there and whether, whether there are barriers to any, any fish or wildlife moving through this waterway.
And, and good evening. I don't know if you can hear me, Douglas Fountain here. Steve, would it make sense to pull up the photographs that attach to the application? Walk through that can answer, I think, some of these questions.
Yeah, I may, just having trouble getting the screen to cooperate here.
And why he's doing that, the spillway I'd say is approximately thirty six inches above the stream itself. The spillway is probably eighty, a hundred years old. I'm not sure. And I've got your other questions as far as the culvert over at Pettit Road. You know, a lot of this sediment is Pettit Road is what we're dealing with. And it's one of the things I spoke with Peter about the, from Highway Department. And that's why he was sort of eager to work with us, because it's been an ongoing issue for sixty years.
Yeah. Okay, well, three foot spillway probably is blocking any, any any movement between the areas. Just, Stephen, sometimes you have to stop sharing and then reshare to get things to show up. I don't know if that might be.
Yeah, maybe. Let me try.
But, yeah, so, so maybe this is not a critical element.
Is it three feet on, it's three feet on the downhill side of the dam though, right?
Correct. Yes, correct.
Yeah, I think to try to retrofit that to allow easier fish passage would be very difficult without compromising the whole, you know, spillway.
Absolutely.
Apologizing, having trouble getting.
All right. Well, perhaps, I mean, so giving that is a three foot spillway. Yeah, I, I mean, unless, unless there's already somehow, you know, it's a, it's a tiered rocky thing, which it didn't look like. It looked like it was a, a strict fall over. I don't, then, then the rest of the conversation, getting, getting the culvert or making sure there's access to the culvert or through the for bay is not as important. Because things aren't going to be able to come upstream anyway.
We did receive comments from Yan, which I just saw for the first time tonight. But I think the desire is to try to keep it under five thousand square feet of total disturbance. Just because the fountains are concerned about budget and, you know, they can scale back the size of the project so that it, it stays under that to avoid the need for, you know, speedy's permit.
Okay, yeah, if you could just provide a limit to disturbance line on the plan and area calculation. Or like to see a couple hundred square feet below the threshold, just so there's some wiggle room there during construction. But, yeah, absolutely. If you're under the threshold, that takes those comments away.
Yan, maybe you want to go through your memo? Well.
Yeah, yeah, I thought I, I've discussed the project with Mr. Fountain over the last couple of years. I think the. Yeah, yeah, I thought I, I've discussed the project with Mr. Fountain over the last couple of years. I think the the protocol and the sequence of things is, you know, is appropriate. It seems well conceived. Really just want to see how, you know, they're talking about eight hundred cubic yards of, of removals. Just understanding a little bit more about how the material will be dewatered onsite and confined to the displacement area, looking at erosion controls. I think the four bay is a great idea, you know. It's good to incorporate those type of practices to prevent future impact. So I think I have a good, a good plan. We had a couple questions or clarifications. There, there will need to be a mitigation plan. I, I wasn't aware of the extent of invasive species removal that was located within the spoil displacement area. So I think that can count so long as that area that that the spoils will be kind of graded out becomes something other than lawn. You know, that, so we'd like to kind of see a, a plan of for how that area will be treated long term. Then obviously, if you can incorporate it, as was suggested by Jerome, a couple of areas along the pond edge that can provide a little bit of buffer. I think, I think the plan is, is a good one.
That's, that's not a problem at all, yeah.
And you had, you had raised access on the pond and the contractor that we've spoken with feels that they probably could access the pond strictly from the driveway side so that it would not require working with them to town right away.
Okay.
You know, so that would, you know, just avoid, you know, the complication there.
Yes, the long, long, long reach excavator, I'm sure it could go one side.
Is that what you're planning is a, because sometimes they have those like suction things that go up into a big dewatering bag or are you just putting, using an excavator? What, do you have a sense of the process?
Yeah, the, the approach, I don't know if the plan showed up again, I I have it on my screen, but we're gonna do a temporary diversion, you know, to divert the water, you know, around the pond and work area. And as Jan suggested, we will show a temporary, you know, containment area prior to discharge into the stream itself. You know, so we revised the plan on that component, but once, once they dewater as much as they can, they're going to use the traditional mechanical method of just using a long reach, you know, backhoe. And so the material will be collected and because of the close proximity between, you know, the dredged area, you know, the pond and then the disposal area, they're either take it back and forth right away or they will put it in a small, you know, dump, dump truck and then, you know, transport it there, but they're just, it's very close together, so it'll be easy for them to, you know, move the, the material from the pond directly into the temp, you know, the storage area for dewatering.
Consider, depending on the topography there, if you're not using, you know, bags, sometimes you see the, you know, the crater, almost like a basin.
Yeah, what, what I, what I forgot to explain is that, that is our plan is what we've done on other pond dredging projects is we will excavate out a deep pole and we use the parent soil that's there and create a berm around the hole and then the dredge material will be deposited into the hole, allowed to dewater and once that dewaters, then we will backfill with the parent soil. You know, and then that mitigation plan would take place, you know, on top of that. Perfect. So that, that was the kind of strategy we thought would work best in this case because of the, you know, desire to keep the cost down and to, you know, work with what, you know, the existing conditions are.
Yeah, and it works, yeah.
Steve, would you like me to try and share the screen again? Because I think we have a, a lot of photographs. I mean, there's been a lot of discussion here.
Yeah, I'm.
As I'm not able to, others are participating. So if you want to, because we have put a package together and.
So I think, Steve, you have to stop sharing.
Okay. Okay, now you should.
Let me see if I can give this a whack here. I'm new to the Zoom thing.
I'm not sure we have to see much more. I, you know, I think you've got this under control and Jan is satisfied with the methodology. So I.
Just one practical question is we we're in the process of applying to the state as well. I mean, they did come out and confirm the boundary and yeah, but we will be applying for their, you know, to get a permit from them as well.
And I don't know if anyone can see this.
Yes, we can.
So just, Steve, do you want me to take the, sort of a quick walk around here?
Yeah, just do it quickly because they, they feel pretty comfortable.
Fair enough. So again, this is the area of distribution that we're talking about. This is behind the upper barn. Again, area that was all flagged out.
So I assume that's pretty level right now of that area where you're gonna put this?
Very level.
Yes, it is great. It is very level.
Yep.
This is looking over, that's Pettit Road off in the distance, the barn to the right, the pond to the left. This would be the proposed staging area, sort of what we call the temporary staging area. We'd want to return it to this. But again, there's the pond. Walking again around the staging or the distribution area, that's what it looks like now. This was originally a pony paddock back in the sixties and seventies and early eighties.
And it's entirely invasive plants now.
Yeah. Again, just another shot of the paddock. These, these photographs are keyed into the site survey plan, one of the sheets, so you could sort of see these with the numbers. There's some dead trees that we planted in the eighties. It didn't last too long, some crabapple. Again, this is the pony paddock, what's left of the pony paddock and the area of distribution.
Okay.
Again, we'll limit it to five thousand. Now turning around, this is the stream to the left and you can sort of see the spillway off in the distance. And I'm walking back towards the pond. Obviously no work. Here's the actual spillway itself.
So that's, that's three feet high, that water?
Correct.
Wow.
Yeah, it's, it might be, yeah, it's, it's easily thirty six inches. Again, this is looking back at the staging area. All the distribution was to the left and the spillways to the right. And this is that same picture that we were looking at earlier, but before water was higher. But you can see the depth of the pond is, is a foot at the most. Right now, today, on this hot day, it's maybe six inches. My mother refers to it as the, well, we see herons walking across it. Here's to the right of the pond and this is the area of the four bay that we'd work with Peter to sort of capture any sediment at this point. And again, Pettit Road, the distance.
And that's where the, the, the stream comes under the road there?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
And this is the other side of the pond, Pettit Road and to Steve's point earlier, we would so stipulate that we wouldn't have any equipment on this side. We'd do it all from the other side of the pond with a long reach excavator.
Okay.
And we threw these, this is just some early seventies photos of of our, of my childhood ponies. Sugar and spice. That's all, that's all I got for you.
Okay, thank you. So, what's the next steps here, Jan? Last Jan.
It's, it's up to the board. I mean, it's something that I'd be comfortable handling administratively if you wanted to see it go that way. Obviously, there's a DC permit and some comments that need to be addressed, but as I stated previously, it's a good plan and we have a couple of comments, but it's appropriate.
So what do you think? Ready to, anyone want to make a motion to make it administrative? Bruce, you're muted, but no. Thank you, Bruce.
Also move that the applicant can work going forward with Jan to complete the process.
Okay, and did I see Charlene? Okay, any further discussion on this? I think, I think we did have some good comments here that, that talked about potential mitigation. I and I, I appreciate the, the, I, I was surprised to hear that Jan's been talking about this for several years. So I think that that gives me confidence that this has been looked at carefully. So I guess I'd look for, unless there's any other discussion, hearing none, I'll pull the board. Jerome?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Bruce?
Aye.
Charlene? Yeah, muted, but say it louder.
Aye.
Thank you. And I also say aye. So we are, we have agreed to the motion to make this an administrative application. Thank you much and good luck.
Thank you so much. Stay cool. Cheers.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is calendar number twenty six dash twenty two WP. This is the Grossman residence at thirty six East Ridge Road, Waka Buck, New York, and this is an application for a septic force main within the wetland buffer. And who's, okay, Alan.
Back. Good evening, Jan Allen Belch. So this application, as I, as you pointed out, is for a force main to be constructed within the wetland buffer. Perhaps I need to share the screen so you can see the plan. And I think it may help. So on this property, which is on the west side of East Ridge Road, I'm just trying to pick that out of here. Oh, that's better. A little bigger than that. So this property was on the east side of East Ridge Road. It's kind of an L-shaped property. There's a water course on the near the eastern boundary of this property. And there's a pond, which is kind of like shared between this property and the neighbor to the east. The one hundred fifty foot buffer is actually right here. You know, off of the, off of the water course. And so what is being proposed on this property is, maybe I can just show a picture of it. I think it may help. Is actually the removal of this existing shed building and the construction of a cabana at this location. Maybe I'll just sort of, so this is the shed building and there's some little patio on this side of it. The septic tank happens to be just off of this patio, which is in the rear of the building, happens to be over here. So what's being proposed actually is a force main from an ejector pump to be located around here on the east side.
We're still seeing the plan.
Yeah, okay, then I'll show you this. Let me, let me zoom in a little closer so you can see it.
Okay. Thank you.
I apologize. So this is the, this is the outline of the existing shed building to be removed. And this is the new cabana to be constructed essentially over the same footprint. There's a small patio here, existing pool, there's the wetland buffer line here. And what's being proposed is a D one grinder pump model to take wastewater flows from the new cabana building and convey that into the existing septic tank off of the rear of the patio, stone patio in the rear of the building. And so this force main would be, it's approximately one hundred eighty square feet of disturbance of existing lawn within the wetland buffer in order to convey the flows into the septic tank. So that's what's being proposed. As you can see that all the, all this work, like the cabana work to, you know, take down the shed and construct the cabanas outside of the wetland buffer, including the grinder pump that's outside. And we're, it's basically there's a runoff, curiously, by the way. There's runoff from the driveway is conveyed in existing pipes to this stone line channel. And we're just going to take the roof runoff and put it down the stone line channel. And we calculated that the increase in impervious services around fifty four square feet. So it's really very de minimis. And
Are you sure it's not fifty four thousand square feet?
I'm quite positive in this case. I was a little more careful on this one.
All right.
I apologize for that last one.
No, no, I just had to pull your chain.
No, 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 you're welcome to pull my leg on that one, but.
How about five hundred and forty?
But, no, no, it's actually, I was pretty careful. So it actually was a change of fifty four square feet. When you really look at it, from this to that, it's pretty minimal. Of the impervious services. There's some pervious services here. There's a little chicken coop there. There's a little planter there. But the, the amount of changes is really quite minimal. It's basically the cabana building and a little bit of patio and that's it. And the pool equipment pad, that's really all there is.
Yeah, well, this should be administrative also, I believe. I, I'd make a motion that we let this go administrative. It seems pretty straightforward.
Talking about.
Okay, so I do have a question and I don't know if it makes any difference. If this is, is the cabana going to be seasonal or year round and does that make any difference at all to how you treat? I mean, do you put, do you winterize with our Vista? I mean, what, what happens and do you know the plans, whether it's seasonal or not?
I think for the use of the pool, it's going to be very seasonal. You know, so I think that I would say it's a much more seasonal use of the cabana building and it's strictly a cabana. So that's how I I believe it's going to be used based on my understanding, understanding, you know, speaking with, with Darren. I don't know if I have Michael Grossman or Amy on the line too, that might be able to illuminate that, but I really just see it as being a very seasonal structure. I don't think it would make that much difference in its overall use.
Yeah, that's, I, I didn't know if there's anything with a pump system that has a, or a force main that has any, any changes based on seasonality and I figured I would ask, but if you don't think it makes much difference. I guess the other thing is I should ask Jan, I'm assuming this would be all right with you if we decided to go administrative. I see his nodding his head. Any, any other discussion on this? Okay, so I'll pull the board. Whoa, everybody moved. Jerome?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Bruce?
Aye.
Charlene? And so we didn't hear her, but she did say aye and.
Aye, I'm sorry.
And I'll also say aye. So the this, we have agreed to move this, to the motion to move this to administrative. Thank you, Jan, and good luck with this, Alan.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Okay, so the next item on our agenda is calendar number oh eight dash seventeen PB. This is Oak Ridge Commons, four fifty Oak Ridge Common in South Salem, New York, and this is request for a partial release of the car wash construction performance bond and we have, who is on for this?
Didn't see anybody.
I don't see anybody either. I mean, we do have a letter, but I'm I think I would prefer to see. I think I would prefer to see.
I think it is. This one has to go to the town board and then come back to you.
It does, yeah.
And I don't know if that makes a difference, uh, but it's.
So we could make a motion to send a letter to the town board, um, asking them to. Agree to the, or I guess they have to.
It's a, it's an authorization for you to conduct a public hearing and render a, a recommendation as to reduction.
Just for an update, uh, on the car wash.
Yeah.
Uh, project's complete. We did our final inspection. A couple of weeks ago, as-built surveys are all been in. Um, everything is in, is in good shape. Um, so the work's been completed, it's been completed per the plan. Um, and then now the applicant's requesting, uh. That the performance bond be released, and, uh, because of the mechanisms in the code, it has to go. To the town board and back, back to you, so, uh, it's, decision would just be referring it to the town board.
And, and you also have to conduct a public hearing, so.
We could set a public hearing for it.
Set a public hearing date, refer it to the town board. The, the referral would need to be made by motion, the public hearing, you could just. Agree by consensus, what, whether to put it on in August and September.
Okay, so I guess the first item would be to ask for a motion, um, to send the. A letter to the town board, asking them to authorize us to take the appropriate next actions. Thank you, Charlene. Anybody want to second this? Okay, it looked like Jerome beat your voice to that. Any further discussion? I'll pull the board, Jerome.
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Bruce, you're muted.
Aye.
Charlene?
Aye.
And I also say aye, so we will. Take the next steps on this and send the motion to the town board, um. I guess we could set a public hearing for August, um. I know sometimes we avoid August or because of. Of, uh. You know, holidays, but this is the release of a performance of a bond. I don't see that that's that important, so, um. If we all agree, we could set a public hearing for August. Thumbs up? Yep, yep, okay. Um, so that will be done, so I know Kirsten, you're gonna have to get in touch and let them know that. They have actions to take and they, okay, great. Anything else on this matter? And the next item on our agenda is calendar number oh-eight dash oh-two PB. This is JVG Estates. On Blue Stone Lane, South Salem, New York, and this is the request for a wetland bond reduction, and I think Vito, are you on for this?
That's me. Hi, how are you?
Hi.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Yeah, I'm requesting a reduction on the, um. Wetland mitigation planting bond of twenty percent of the original, uh, bond amount. Has been eighty-five percent of better survival rate, and it's been, uh, two years now.
Okay, so I think what we have to do, we can do this by resolution, so I think our s- next step, if we agree. Is to ask Yan to prepare a resolution for the next meeting, um, that would. Uh, reduce the, the bond in, in accordance with, I think, our, our resolution and the plans here.
Yep.
So.
Yan, have you been on site?
Well, I, I loo- I have, I haven't been to inspect the plantings this year. I was there last year. Uh, before the, the first release of the bond and, and everything was in good shape, so before now, in the next meeting, I'll get out there again with Vito. You know, I'll confirm the eighty-five percent survival rate and, uh, give you a report at the next meeting.
So again, by consensus, can we ask Yan to, uh, prepare a resolution for the next meeting? Okay, I see thumbs all around, so, okay, we've got that, um, thank you, and, um, we'll see you next month, Vito.
Okay, great, thank you. Have a good evening.
Sorry to keep you so late for this, but.
That's all right.
Alright.
Bye-bye.
Bye. So the, um. The next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes of June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Um, they were updated, but I think we've all gotten the copy of the updated, um, minutes, so go ahead, Jerome.
I move we approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll second.
Thank you, Greg. Any other discussion? Okay, I'll pull the board. Jerome?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Bruce?
Aye.
Uh, Charlene?
Aye.
And I'll also say aye, so the minutes are approved. Um, our next meeting date is August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two. I do anticipate since, uh. The emergency declaration is through August thirteenth. That we will be, um, meeting in person, but if the emergency declaration is, um. Extended again, then, then we'll meet again by Zoom.
We have to ask the governor to sync in with our meetings.
Yeah. I know, especially, I mean, thirteenth, it doesn't give a heck of a lot of time, that's, I think, a Sunday, right? So, um, anyway. Um, with that, I'd look for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Uh, Bruce, Bruce moved. For a second. Okay, Charlene, any further discussion? Okay, uh, Jerome?
Yes.
Uh, Greg?
Yes.
Bruce?
Aye.
Um, Charlene?
Aye.
And I also say aye, and, you know, just, uh, so we adjourned at ten twenty-eight. Thank you all.